Okay, we're gonna... Good evening, everyone. Good evening. I know there's a lot of excitement and exuberance in our great city, and I appreciate it, but the Sacramento City Council meeting will, in fact, come to order. Let's call the roll and establish a quorum, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Warren, Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Hanson, Councilmember Carr, Vice Mayor Jennings, Councilmember Guerra, Councilmember Chenier, Councilmember Ashby, joining us momentarily, Mayor Steinberg.
I'm here. Thank you very much. We do have a quorum, and I think we do have a full city council tonight. We will begin with special presentations and then go to public comment on matters not on the agenda. There are some 25 people signed up for public comment on matters not on the agenda. Let us begin with special presentation number one, which is recognizing the Sacramento Zoological Society's 90th anniversary.
Want to do the pledge?
Let us begin first appropriately with the pledge of allegiance, okay? That's right. I'm just excited myself, what can I say? Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Oh.
Mr. Reag, is there a closed session? Report out.
We have nothing to report, Mayor.
Nothing to report. Okay, then, as stated prior to the pledge, we'll begin with special presentations, and let us begin with recognizing the zoo's 90th anniversary. I turn it over to my colleague, Councilmember Steve Hanson.
Thank you very much, Mayor Steinberg. Today is a great day for the city as we recognize our own zoo's 90th anniversary, which 90 years ago, 1927, opened with just 40 animals and 4.2 acres and has expanded continuously since then, and now has many more acres in animals and a large budget, but also it moved from a city-operated and run facility to a one run by the Sacramento Zoological Society. And we've just worked very hard over the years with the board and with volunteers to create a wonderful place in the community. And now, at this 90th anniversary, the zoo is contemplating another 90 years. And so I'd like to invite our friends from the zoo up, Jeff, Starr, whoever's presenting. We've got board members here. If you're a board member with the zoo, why don't you come and stand near the front? I know that you have some special guests here on the side, so you may want to introduce them, too. The most phenomenal, I think, is probably Herkimer, who is a California desert tortoise, and Mayor, you may have sponsored the bill. I'm not sure that made him the official state tortoise. But it is our official state tortoise. And Herkimer is 90 years old, so he was born at virtually the same time the zoo was. We also have a parrot, a baby hedgehog, and I think that's most of it. We did try to fulfill Mr. Ryan Lilis's request for baby flamingos, but they weren't yet ready to leave the zoo, although they are very cute. So why don't I turn it over to the zoo folks to tell us a little bit about what they're working on?
Good afternoon, and thank you, Councilmember Hanson, and thank you, Mayor, and city council members for honoring the zoo today. I'm Robert Chorchar, I'm the interim director of the Sacramento Zoo, and I'd like to invite you, as we reimagine the Sacramento Zoo. So as you can see, exciting things are happening at the zoo. In June, as Steve mentioned, we celebrated our 90th anniversary, and so it seems like an excellent opportunity to reflect with the council and the city on our past, our recent accomplishments, as well as our exciting plans for the future. The William Land Park Zoo opened in 1927 when the city of Sacramento brought together a variety of animals and created the Little Park in the zoo. The 4.2-acre zoo was home to 40 animals, which included monkeys, raccoons, and birds. In the early 1960s, the zoo was enlarged to its current size, 14 acres, and new habitats were built throughout the zoo. It was not until 1975 that the zoo received accreditation by the Association of Zoos and Aquariums, and we have maintained continuous accreditation ever since.
Order in the chamber.
Yeah. This is Julio, so it's hard to compete with him. In 1997, the nonprofit Sacramento Zoological Society took over financial and operational management of the Sacramento Zoo on land which is still owned by the city. Today, the nonprofit Sacramento Zoo is home to more than 500 native, rare, and endangered animals. We have attendance in excess of a half a million visitors each year, and last year alone, we reached over 80,000 schoolchildren through onsite as well as ZooMobil educational programs. Looking to the future, we are setting a bold vision to transform the zoo into an innovative, world-class facility with continued dedication to animal care, conservation, and education. To that end, we have embarked on two critical initiatives. The first was rebranding. In June, we launched a vibrant, colorful new look and feel to the zoo in conjunction with our 90th celebration. The rebranding is focused on expressing the zoo's new vision by telling the institution's compelling story while remaining committed to the concepts of world-class animal care, local and global conservation, as well as creative and innovative education. The second initiative was the master plan. After nearly a year of work by our staff, our trustees, and our award-winning architect, CLR Design, a new comprehensive 20-year facility master plan that completely reimagines the entire 14-acre campus is near completion. The $75 million master plan is centered on the concept of transparency and prioritizes both animal care and immersive guest experiences. The first exciting phase of the master plan will be the state-of-the-art biodiversity center. The biodiversity center will allow zoo guests to see up close a diverse range of animals, including reptiles, amphibians, fish, and invertebrates. Now I turn it over to Jeff Ramundo, the president of the board of the Sacramento Zoo.
Thank you, Robert. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the members of the council. I am Jeff Ramundo, the president of the zoo board right now. As Robert said, the zoo has been in Sacramento 90 years, and I've been along for the ride for 71 of those years, from starting back in the little perambulator, I guess they called it in those days. And I've seen the changes in the zoo during those years. For me, I'm really inspired to see this re-imagination of the zoo. This is a watershed time for the zoo. For the past two years, all of the changes, many of which were outlined by Robert, have happened, and we are no longer that little zoo in the park. We've really made some changes. The staff has been, we've taken steps to upgrade staff to the point now where they can meet or exceed the quality of, at zoos anywhere, of comparable size in the country. We've revitalized the grounds. It's a sanctuary now more attractive and more peaceful than it's ever been before. I really hope that you can get out to see it. We've modernized our brand, as Robert said. The master plan benefits both animals in our care and our visitors, and now we're launching a $7.5 million capital campaign, the first investment in that $75 million master plan. We're excited to present you with details of that in the meetings that we have scheduled or are in the process of scheduling with each of you. Our society board is committed to that future, and like I say, we're not going back. We've become the most heavily, the most visited civic amenity in the Sacramento region. Now we believe it's time to re-energize our relationship with the city, to revitalize that partnership that we've had for the last 20 years. So we'll be, as I said, we'll be scheduling meetings with members of the council to follow up on that. But in short, the master plan that we're pursuing will be appropriate to the 21st century. It'll meet contemporary animal care standards. It'll revitalize a spectacular civic attraction for the entire region, for both local residents and for visitors to the region. And then we're going to be taking advantage of modern methods and concepts to meet the expectations of visitors to the zoo. So like I said, none of this will be possible without our city partners, you. So please let us know if you'd like to have a behind-the-scenes tour. We can show you the master plan. We can show you the details of what needs to be upgraded there and the things that we've already done there. So we'd be happy to have any of you sign up for a, or contact us for a tour. I would like to introduce one other group beside, these are the board members of the zoo, thank you, and you've already met three of our other visitors, but we do have a number of other staff, volunteers, docents, and others from the zoo here tonight. I'd like to ask them to stand up as well, if you will. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, and we'd be happy to answer any questions about that.
So thank you for that, Jeff. The only thing I'll say, I think the mayor's going to take back over here, thank you so much to everybody who's here. We're going to do a photo right afterward, so volunteer, staff, animals, two-legged, four-legged, winged or not, please come, please come down, and we'll do a quick photo with all of you.
Just to say what a treasure our zoo is, and it's so exciting to hear about the expansion possibilities. And I want to change a rule unilaterally, if I might, which is that we usually give two minutes for public testimony, but for the tortoise, I want to give six minutes, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Warren?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, I too, just wanted to thank you, welcome our interim director, but also to thank the board members. I'm a former board member of the Sacramento Zoo and know the valuable role that the zoo plays in our city, and it's one of our treasured amenities in our city, so congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's do a photo. Oh, one more, one more comment.
So I just wanted to say, I can't imagine raising a kid without taking them to the zoo. The zoo is a really integral part of my child's upbringing. We've had tremendous experiences there over the years, sleepovers, concerts, and the education part of it has been tremendous. I think it broadens a child's imagination in a big way. I can't thank you enough, and I love our zoo.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I can say this while they're walking up, too. Obviously, I have a four-year-old. We spend a lot of time at your zoo. It's wonderful. We love it, and I just think it's a treasure for the whole region. It's something that reaches across all of our districts and outside of our city lines and brings people in from everywhere. It's just an amazing job. And also, if you guys can't see from back there, that little baby hedgehog is the cutest thing on the planet. See if you can try to get a good look at that baby on your way up.
Mr. Churchill. Mr. Churchill. Rick Jennings, how you doing? So what does it take to get the interim name off?
Okay. We can, we can file out here, please, quietly, we appreciate it. What a great start to the meeting. The next presentation, I know it's Councilmember Hanson, but he's...
I gave it to Mr. Guerra.
Gave it to Councilmember Guetta, the second presentation on the 100th anniversary of Breathe California. Councilmember Guetta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If we, if we could have David Modestetti and Mike Matos, the ED and the board president, please come up to the podium. Mr. Mayor, it's a pleasure and an honor to have the opportunity to celebrate the 100-year of Breathe California Sacramento Region from 1917 to 2017. And, you know, this, this actually is very personal to me, not only as a member of the Air Quality Management District and now vice chair, but, you know, my grandfather died of lung disease and from tobacco and smoking and all of those impacts. And so far, in our city, in our country, many communities are impacted by the issue of air quality. It's a big social justice fight, if you look at many of those communities. And in that timeframe, Breathe California Sacramento Region has been involved in that, in that fight. And I'm going to read only a little bit here of this, whereas for this resolution, and then ask our speakers to speak a little bit. But this resolution here reads, "Whereas Breathe California Sacramento Region's advocacy has made impacts locally and across the state as the organization that has been instrumental in bringing Light Rail to Sacramento in 1986 to reduce air pollution, as well as organizing work to pass 187 in 1987's Tobacco Tax Initiative, providing a vital source of funding to prevention, education, and medical programs to mitigate smoking's deadly impacts, now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and city council Sacramento, that Breathe California Sacramento Region has demonstrated itself as a leader, collaborator, effective advocate for clean air, and healthy lungs for 100 years."
Big round of applause for Breathe California Sacramento Region.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Steinberg, members of the council. I'm Dave Modestetti. I'm the new CEO of Breathe California, and I want to thank you for your honor of giving us a resolution for our first 100 years. We have been continuously providing services in the Sacramento region, both to children and adults in the areas of, first of all, tuberculosis prevention. We were started in 1917 as the Sacramento Society for the Prevention and Cure of Tuberculosis. That cure was founded in the 1950s and 60s, and we shifted our focus to the programs that we offer today, mostly to disadvantaged communities. We do asthma and COPD screenings, screenings for other lung diseases. We have programs in tobacco cessation, tobacco-free communities, and in reducing air pollution, mass transit, transportation alternatives. So anyway, I think we had, we've had great success over the past 100 years, and we're really looking forward to the next 100 years. And we are going to be celebrating this coming Saturday at the Memorial Auditorium. I know many of you are joining us, so we look forward to that celebration, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I look forward to Saturday night. I know I all have the privilege of being there, and it's just interesting how the American Lung Association, Breathe California, was always an impactful and influential organization, but in some ways, the broader public did not necessarily see this niche issue, I say that in quotes, of air quality, as an existential issue, sometimes not even a priority. And then climate change and the dangers and evil of tobacco. I mean, I think those two issues really have changed now the way the public looks at air quality. This is now a forefront societal issue, but we always stand on the shoulders of those that came before us, and it's the Lung Association, Breathe California, that really helped pave the way. So more on Saturday night, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilman Harris?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I want to go back even a little farther than that. I grew up in the era, as did my colleague Jay Chenier, in there of smog alerts in Los Angeles, when children weren't allowed out of classrooms to go play outdoors. And I have to tell you, the work that's been done on air quality has been very enlightening because their quality is better in Los Angeles now with even more residents than it was in the 60s and 70s. So we can make changes, and the work that we do is very meaningful. We have a little bit different challenges here in the Sacramento Valley, but several of us serve on AQMD, and it's really great work to take part in. I'd also like to say that myself and the city manager, our finance manager, our Department of Utilities manager, all took part in the Breathe California Bike Track. And it's meaningful, and it's fun, and I would encourage everybody to sign up for next year. I had some of the best bike rides of my life this year. It was gorgeous, and I thank you for all your work.
Thank you. And Sacramento's just been a tremendous partner with us over, over many, many years, so thank you very much.
You do thank you. Councilman Hanson?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I regretfully did not ride on the Breathe Track this year, although it's an aspiration of mine. I just want to say thank you, because, you know, as we've invested a lot into our infrastructure to make it easier for people to walk, to bike, hopefully build a better transit system, but generally to get people to think about public health. And I think Mr. Guerra hit it right on the head. This is an environmental justice and economic issue as well, particularly because of the diesel emissions and how that lodges in people's lungs. And if you're close to a freeway, you're likely to be more economically disadvantaged, more likely to be people of color, and those are the kids that get asthma from that diesel emission. And so we've been working very hard on greening our fleet as a city, but also embracing the Volkswagen Electrify America Green City Award, so that we can continue to model that behavior. But without the work of Breathe, and you do a lot on all fronts, we wouldn't be where we are. So thank you. And I hope we continue to have a bipartisan country who cares about clean air, healthy people, and that we get out of our cars more.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, if, if we can all give 100 years' worth of effort and 100 more to come of fighting for clean air for everyone, including those with the least resources, a big round of applause for Breathe California Sacramento Region, 100-year celebration.
Okay, thank you. Now we move to public testimony for items not on the agenda. We have 38 people signed up here tonight. That's good. And this is an important part of our, of our public proceeding, and we welcome everyone. I do note a couple of things. One, there are 12 speakers signed up to speak about Indigenous Peoples' Day, and I want to just begin by expressing what I think was a misunderstanding and an appropriate apology. I know some folks from the community were upset that last week's meeting, the council meeting, was canceled. And it was canceled only because the majority of the members of the city council were in Austin, Texas, on the Sacramento Metro Chamber Study Mission, learning what, a lot from the great city of Austin. And so there was nothing intended as offense, certainly against the Native American leadership and the Native American community in any way. And so I hope you will accept that as an explanation and as an apology. There are 12 people signed up under this category. You're all welcome to talk, but I would also invite you, if you wanted, in the interest of time, to designate a couple of people to speak about your concerns. Okay?
Absolutely not.
Okay. Okay, it was, it was just a suggestion. It was just a suggestion. You're all welcome to speak. So let's begin. Gregory, I'll have to turn it over to Mindy. Thank you.
So my first two speakers are Roberto Alfonso, Jimin Moon, and Gregory Galvanovich. Let's start with Gregory. Following Gregory is... And following Greg is Marge Groh Expanza.
Gregory, let's start the clock. You've got two minutes. I know he's got a lot of reading material here, so let's get right to it.
The speech is on African-Americans versus whitey. Can we have some peace and quiet and some understanding? Be patient, don't get angry. I have pros and cons on both sides. In 1988, in the Bronx, I read the autobiography of Malcolm X, and I started hating white people. Omex, there are statues in Mexico, 8,000 years old. Omex have faces, lips, nose with African features. Wachita is a term from 9,000 years ago. An older term than omex includes African-Americans and American Indians as one group. In the background of paintings of George Washington, there's a Moor, a black person, in elegant and sophisticated clothes. The Moors advised George Washington. Glenn Beck video states, "The first seven or eight U.S. presidents were black." The Moors helped Christopher Columbus navigate. Without the Moors, Columbus wouldn't have been lost. There were millions of blacks already here when Columbus arrived. They weren't, there weren't enough slave ships to bring millions of people here. So I tell African-Americans, "One million-man march? Have an 18-million-man march. March into Washington, D.C., and tell the white people to get out, as they stole your country." The Moors created the Masons behind the scenes. The Moors helped King James write the King James version of the Bible. King James was a Moor. Moor is the correct term, not African-American and not blacks. The term African-American and blacks imply they have no rights, and I have a book on the Moors to back that up. The word Moors is not well-recognized. Everyone uses the word. I'm out of time. I need about eight, four more Tuesdays to finish this.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Marge Groh Expanza, and then Ishtel Madrigal.
Oh, Matixus, I'm going to greet you as my people do here. I am California Mewook, all the way from Yosemite to the Bay Area. I represent them today. This is the Women's Warrior Society staff that I'm holding here. My Indian name is Sister Who Walks With Bears. I am here today to ask and to plead that you stop this craziness of honoring Christopher Columbus. He exploited us, did not explore. He's a great exploiter. There's a big difference. If you are confused, you can look that up, because I'm on a time clock. I assume we won't get to have our picture taken with you, but if you would like to, with this staff, she's very well-recognized all over the United States, even to North Dakota at Standing Rock, where I stood in solidarity with the brothers and sisters there. I know what I'm talking about when I say that, yes, we recognize the Italian population, but if you see here, we also honor the medicine wheel of the red, yellow, black, and white. That is all colors that come together. This man who just spoke, unfortunately, I do not mean to disrespect him, but he does not speak for me or my tribes at all. not speak for me or my tribes at all. What I'm saying is with respect to you, to the white nation, the red nation, the yellow nation, and the black nation, all of us are related. Now, the reason I come here also is I was adopted out at birth due to assimilation and everything, and a lot of us have boarding school traumas, historical traumas. Mine was being adopted out, and yes, my mother, who adopted me, was Italian. Her last name was Talia Farrow. If she was still alive right now, she'd be standing next to me saying, "Get rid of that Christopher Columbus Day and honor the Native people with Indigenous Peoples' Day."
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Time is up.
Ischl Madrigal, and then Mike Williams.
Hello. I am Ischl Madrigal. I'm here on behalf of the Sacramento Coalition of Indigenous Peoples' Day. My quote is absolutely my own, and it doesn't necessarily represent the group. I wanted to start this story by saying, telling a story, my comment, I mean, that when I was a young girl, and for the first time, someone said to me to go back to my country, I went home crying to my mother. And I went crying to her, retelling what had happened. And essentially, what she responded was, "You tell them to go back on the boat they came from." And essentially, what that story is telling you, or telling us, is that we're Native peoples on these continents for over 12,000 years. You know, I would appreciate to be looked at when I'm talking because I don't know if you're actually listening to me, if you're looking at your phones or looking down. It's not respectful, and I'm demanding my space and to be heard right now. So as I was saying, in Montana, there was a, the fossils of a one-year-old baby boy that were found. These bones were approximately 12,000 years old, and they contain a DNA that unites all of the Native peoples in the Western Hemisphere. And this connection between natives from the highest point of the Americas to the lowest point has been affected by Christopher Columbus, by the story of genocide that not only erases the narratives of Native people, but it also denies the genocide
Your time is up.
...of my black relatives.
Thank you for testifying. We've got seven more people.
So all we're asking is for our stories to be heard.
Absolutely.
And so we would like you to actually put our resolution on the agenda.
Hey, thank you. We'll consider it. Next.
Next speaker is Mike Lee.
I'm Mike Williams.
Lee.
Member of the Western Bandit Tamooka Shonies. Well, anyways, let's say if Christopher, you know what? We always say Christopher Columbus discovered America. Well, wait a minute. That's historical fact. The Chinese been here, the Vikings been here, the Polynesians been here. So how the hell did he discover this shit? Excuse my language, but this is upsetting.
Excuse me, we don't cuss in the chambers.
Okay, I try not to, but this is kind of upsetting.
It's not what we do. We maintain a decorum here.
Forty years of propaganda gets my people are kind of disturbing. Let's say if he did discover a continent, he would have found vast empires with vast knowledge of agriculture. He would have found that our people had over 2,000 to 3,000 health remedies. We weren't savages, but that's the propaganda that was being put upon our people from the first robber of the Europeans, not these other races. They came to trade. They didn't come to kill us. The Europeans came to kill us. So, I mean, like I said, he would have found all these empires around America, but all he brought were just the slavery and genocide. So why are we recognizing this man? And I say the propaganda, with this Columbus Day, that's the propaganda still going on. We got to give this, we all, every year, we got, the Native people got to get this shoved down our throats. We want this to end because it's a big lie anyways. I mean, you guys could Google it, find the truth. He's a big lie. Why are we celebrating a big lie? That's all I got to say.
And next speaker is Ray Lee. Following Mr. Lee is Kevin Carter. Ray Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the city council, for allowing me to speak. My name is Raymond Lee. On behalf of NorCal resist, we're asking city council to agendize and support the resolution to recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day on the second Monday of October in lieu of Columbus Day. Italians and Italian descendants have a great deal of pride. Italian culture is known across the globe for its accomplishments in art, science, food, and music. However, Columbus should not be a symbol or source of pride because of what's happened in this state. So it is time for our city to acknowledge and dispel the Columbus myth. It is well-known that Columbus never landed in the continental United States, and he did not discover the Americas because the Western Hemisphere was already densely populated. What is less known are the facts that Columbus was a purveyor of enslavement, violence, and brutal treatment of the Awak and Tino people of the Caribbean. Not only did he kidnap and transport thousands of Spain as slaves and forced others to labor in mines on transfer plantations on their own land, but also responsible for the brutal murder and rape of women and children. The myth perpetuated by the celebration of Columbus Day condones the lasting effects of genocide and colonization fueled by racism. A transition from recognizing Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day would place Sacramento amongst the California cities recognizing the cultural heritage and traditional life ways of Native peoples in history, as well as recognizing Sacramento's place, present Native American communities, especially the Miwok and Maidu nations. Ultimately, everyone in our community would benefit by recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day, especially in light of...
Sir, now your time is up. Thank you so much.
I'll be real quick. Especially about the recent acts of racial violence toward around the country in names of hate. This proposal drives us into...
Thank you. Sir, your time's up. We've got 38 speakers.
We're a great city. The way to be a world-class city is to take care of our own and be compassionate with our own place. That's what...
Thank you.
Kevin Carter, and then Gillian Kay.
Mayor Steinberg, city council members, my name is Kevin Carter. I'm here to speak about the history, the mandates of history, and when the first, and from the first, that will be the last. In the beginning, it was the Native people. And as we go back to Washington, D.C., and learn along the Potomac River, to the Mississippi, along the bayous that come to California, to where the sovereignty lies, we look at the great expedition of Lewis and Clark and that bird called the eagle. That was a native bird. It was God's bird. But in saying that, we talk about the things that we are trying to conserve upon life, from the trees to the air to the water, comes from the Native people's concern. They are always the ones that are out on the front line for these things that conserve for the human body and the things of nature. But where we continue to miss the mark, where history becomes incomplete, when we fail to recognize and give that day of Indigenous Day to a people to share their history and their culture about preserving these lands. I just recently heard a man come here and speak upon the conservation and the environment of this city. Well, who plays the most important and vital role to all of this is the Indigenous people. And that's what we have to stand up and recognize because when we don't, then history is a lie, and then history becomes incomplete.
Next speaker is Gillian Kay, and then Sabine Wilson.
I'm a resident of Woodlake, and I'm here today because my neighbors and I are trying to get real, concrete answers about the proposed homeless facilities. The last council meeting I attended, one of the council members requested information regarding the proposed facilities. I've emailed members my own questions, and to date, I still have no answers. First, I want to know what are the actual mitigation measures the city plans to implement? All I've been told is there will be more security and cleanup efforts. This is vague, and such non-responses are frustrating and concerning to the surrounding neighborhoods of these proposed facilities. We want to know who the operator is and their track record with these types of facilities. We want to see rules for operation, budgets, terms for the Good Neighbor agreements, and actual details for mitigation efforts, not just vague ideas. This isn't asking a lot, considering this facility is supposed to be slated to be open in less than two months. These ideas should already be fleshed out, especially as the shelter was open last year that caused a lot of grief to local business owners. So to wait till September to roll out just one facility and not know this information is careless. Yes, things take time, but it is disingenuous for the city to say that it had a difficult time finding a location with eminent domain available. My biggest question isn't why two facilities in the same neighborhood. It's why it's near any neighborhood with children, parks, and schools. The city has admitted the need for mitigation efforts, meaning it's fully aware that these facilities are going to cause problems for the surrounding neighborhoods. So why is it attempting to solve one problem by creating another? Why not be transparent from the get-go and have the neighbors actually be on your side instead of like the city has done thus far? Haste makes waste, and all of this uproar and backlash from the neighbors could be avoided with careful and proper planning, which we've yet to see from the city regarding these proposed facilities. These questions and so many more need to be answered so that millions of dollars aren't wasted in a failed attempt to address this very serious epidemic.
Thank you. Your time's up. Thank you.
Speaker is Sabine Wilson, and then Joseph Kowalski.
Mayor Steinberg, councilmen and women, thank you for your time and attention. As a woman of color, there is nowhere else in the world that I would rather live than America. Living here grants me the right to express my own opinions, practice the religion of my choice, the right to vote, et cetera. I am proud of these rights. My mom left a third-world country to grant me these rights. What I am not proud of is the blood spilled, as well as the human rights violations committed against other human beings in order to create these rights. What I am not proud of is the historical violence and current oppression inflicted upon Indigenous peoples. How can we, as a nation who live under the inalienable rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, when we ourselves took all of that and more from the original inhibitors of this land? Christopher Columbus was a conqueror, a rapist, and one of the worst human rights violators of all time. We've taken everything from Indigenous people, and we will never be able to make up for the atrocities committed against them. But a step in the right direction would be to reclaim a day that honors obscene nationalism and use it to honor those whose land, history, culture, and human rights have been stolen from them. I call to action that the city of Sacramento replace Columbus Day with Indigenous Peoples' Day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you for coming to testify, Sabine. Thank you.
Next speaker is Joseph Kowalski, and then Lorraine Frapp.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. My name is Joseph Kowalski. I'm a member of the National Lawyers Guild Sacramento chapter. We're here to support the initiative to replace Columbus Day with Indigenous Peoples' Day. The support for Columbus mostly comes from 1950s textbooks that wanted to kind of whitewash everything to push a certain agenda, whereas the support against him comes from his own words. If you read his own diaries, he describes in great detail the enslavement of the Taino people. There's a letter he wrote to a friend that talks about the price for a 10-year-old girl, and there's letters to the king of Spain praising the expulsion of Jews from Spain. So his own words show that he is not a person at a city that prides itself on its diversity to celebrate. So for those reasons, we ask that we, you know, come together with many cities across the country and replace Columbus Day with Indigenous Peoples' Day. Thank you.
Lorraine, and then Mackenzie Snow.
Good evening. As an Indigenous woman, I, we do not acknowledge borders. It is part of U.S. history that has placed borders on our people. But I'm going to use the U.S. history to go to the facts. On July 4, 1776, the Declaration of Independence was drafted by Thomas Jefferson, proclaiming the founding of the United States of America. Emerged 13 British colonies along the East Coast, not Columbus. And I find it very appalling that he never even stepped foot on the land that we now call the U.S. of A. So the only people that should be fighting for Columbus Day would actually now live in the Bahamas. I do not understand for the life of me, we are not asking other people to celebrate Black Elk, Red Cloud, Gualtemo Sooting Bull, or Geronimo. We're asking an acknowledgement to eradicate Columbus Day. He has no relevance in U.S. history at all. And this is not to bring about anti-Italian sentiment. I love pizza and lasagna just like the next person. What I am saying is that Italian immigrants immigrated to America, 3 million Italians, between 1900 and 1915. I would love to support them finding a day that actually celebrates their existence in the United States of America as they are immigrants here. But we are not immigrants here. We belong here, and I am asking you respectfully to eradicate Columbus Day, abolish it. He has no presence and no relevance in U.S. history whatsoever.
Mackenzie Snow, and then Fong Li.
Hi, I'm Mackenzie. Okay, so we've talked today about a lot of things. We celebrated a zoo, awesome for their hard work. It's evident with all that. The turtle, actually, is from my desert native land. I think he was a desert tortoise. I want to say, yeah. So I'm Navajo and Paiute from Southern Utah region, been here for the past 10 years. But basically, I just wanted to recognize that while that's awesome that they did that, you gave them six minutes, and I, you've kind of just been pushing us around a little bit. I don't think it's too much to ask for a day. It's just one day. I'd also like to point out, we watched a commercial, very informative. Sorry, my notes are weird. I just started this. Oh, okay. The smoking guy. No, he got an award. Anyway, he was smoking. So we were talking about the air quality, all that good stuff. That would have never been a problem had we just adopted more Native American ways to begin with. Half of these problems wouldn't be problems had we just adopted, just a little bit, just learned from each other. Just, you guys know a lot, we knew a lot, like, there's three of us left now, so we can't really teach each other that much, but at least doing the recognition of acknowledging that, you know, that Columbus Day is kind of just, nobody really celebrates it anyway. Thank you.
Next speaker is Fong Li. Following Fong is Wesley Elliott.
Good evening, everyone. I want to say thank you to everyone that's here. I want to say thank you for letting me speak to you
Excuse me.
Because this is the house that belongs to everyone here.
Ms. Lee.
I want to say thank you to my Native American people for being able
Can you cut her off, please?
...to be here and speak.
Ms. Lee? Ms. Lee? Would you like to address the council? That's the purpose. Ms. Lee? Can you address the people?
I want to say thank you for allowing me the short time to speak.
You can turn around.
So I'm here to represent immigrants, immigrants that came here because of the goodness of the people that are, that belong here. The people that belong here allowed for me to come here and live in peace. We are just asking for you, it's a symbolic gesture, it's a symbolic gesture of delayed... We are just asking for you, it’s a symbolic gesture, it’s a symbolic gesture of delayed justice, okay? This is, this justice that you all are supposed to represent needs to be recognized. We need to recognize that there is a delay in providing people with true justice. There’s, there has been, in history, people have been killed on this land. And the people that were killed and raped were the Native Americans. And to continue to uphold a holiday that represents the murder of people, I’m embarrassed to be here, to have to say, to have to even beg you guys to change a holiday, a celebration. And that’s why I turn my back to you, because it’s a shame that it’s gotten to this point, that we’re asking for a symbolic gesture. There needs to be reparation, not just for our brown people, for our black people.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Wesley Elliott, and then Kalishana Epps.
My real name is Yawat Nahitne Hudnashoni, living here in Sacramento. I’d like to first honor this council for what they did last year, when they supported, you guys supported Standing Rock. That was a fantastic vote, fantastic. I look around this council and I see those who voted for it, and I see those who voted against. Now, we come to this package, and I know all of you received it because I delivered it personally. In it was a cover letter, was an article on LA replacing Columbus Day, was also our resolution for recognition observance of Indigenous Peoples’ Day in the city of Sacramento, and also was Indigenous Day Sacramento proposal. The background, all very well written out, typed out, and you all received it because I delivered it to you. Now, I just want to refresh your memory on the letter that we wrote here. To all Sacramento council members, on August 30th, 2017, with a vote of 14 to 1, Los Angeles City Council changed Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples’ Day. LA joined over 23 cities across the USA in making the right choice. To ensure that the Italian Committee did not feel left out, they also established October 12th, the date of Columbus’ arrival in 1492, as Italian-American Heritage Day. This is exactly what city, Sacramento City Council should do. In June 2017, we met with Bill Ceruti, Executive Director of Italian Cultural Center here in Sacramento. During our meeting, Mrs. Ceruti was adamant that he did not want Columbus Day to be changed, nor was he open to sharing the day.
I need you to give me your final thoughts, please.
This same day, this same attitude was taken by Ann Potenza, President of Federated Italian-Americans of Southern California in LA. And like Mrs. Ceruti, she requested that those advocating for Indigenous Peoples’ Day pick a different day.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Time is up.
Okay, thank you.
We have a report, so thank you very much.
Jason Dimos. Jason here. Alana Perez White. Following Alana is John Aguirre.
I would like to start by thanking Councilman Harrison Warren, Councilman Harrison Warren and Mayor Steinberg for meeting with the North Sacramento community yesterday. Last night, you said there is a difference between frustration about not being heard and simply opposing a set of solutions. I completely agree, and I’m not protesting the homeless proposals for the sake of hindering progress. I offer the following key community concerns, and hopes that we can work together for a real beneficial solution. Given the low barrier services proposed at the triage shelter, less than half a mile from an elementary school in a residential neighborhood is not an appropriate location. North Sacramento has many industrial locations that are much more appropriate, like the old Wonder Bread factory or the Army warehouse. And city ultimately has eminent domain over these locations, which brings me to an issue of a lack of transparency in community input. For all of us, you must publicly identify the locations and capacities of all of the other shelters before moving forward with anything permanent, not just the 70-person floor in Road 1. There are 3,500 homeless in Sacramento. Given the scope of the proposed shelters, simple division tells us that you will need 10, yeah, over 3,500, that you will need 10 or more shelters in Sacramento to address the issue successfully. All districts need their own shelters, and it is your job, all of you, as our representatives, every single one of you, to work on this issue with every single one of us. I too am a doer, and I suggest that the city do work actively with North Sacramento Committee on Homelessness, to be comprised of neighborhoods, businesses, and service agencies, with individuals who are invested in helping develop a solution that will work for North Sacramento and work with you rather than against you. My name is Elena Perez White, I am a Woodlake community member, and I am happy to give you my contact information and be a key participant and a community leader in this effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Warren.
Just, can you give your phone number to the city clerk, right, I mean, the city attorney?
We have it right here. We have it right here.
Okay, thank you.
Next speaker is John Aguirre, and then Patricia Taylor.
So as Mr. Aguirre comes to the, to the microphone, I recognize that all of these are very emotional issues, and I would ask that when a speaker is speaking at the podium, or when a council member or the mayor is speaking at the desk, I would ask that you not yell out. And failure to do so forced me to ask you to leave or have you put out by the officers. So I’m just asking for everybody’s professionalism, that you’re asking of us as well, and so we’re all trying to do that, so I’m going to just, let this be the first and last warning. Please do not yell out. I’m, I’m, okay, so if you want to test the system, I can make it work.
I’m not asking to test.
I’m not asking you to keep talking to me while.
Very disrespectful, Ken.
Excuse me, sir.
You had to walk out when we were talking.
Excuse me, sir. No, I’m talking to the officer. Can, can you come down, please?
Come right down here in front of March Grove Eppert. Meowak, California Meowak, you disrespected us when we were up here talking. I dare you to touch me with this Women’s Warrior Society staff, because all hell will break loose in California. I feel disrespected. I don’t know about anybody else, but you disrespected us last week, and it is continuing today. Don’t mean to take your time, I apologize, sir.
I’m asking you.
For you to threaten me.
I’m asking you to not. Okay, so if this continues, I’m going to have to ask you to leave.
Good.
Okay, so.
It’s going to be filmed.
This will be your last warning. Okay, sir. So be your last warning.
Good evening. My name is John Aguirre. I’m a resident and homeowner at the Creamery at Alkali Flat, and I’m here to tell you about the frustration we’re experiencing with strangers who regularly migrate through our community. Loitering, leaving trash, residents report feces in the landscape, we see strangers regularly testing our locks, residents have had intruders in their home. Recently, at 2:30 in the morning, I had to deal with a disturbance outside my house, clearly a person in distress, wanted to sleep next to my home, throwing debris at my house, shouting and disturbing my community. And fortunately, he left reluctantly, but peaceably. Another resident encountered a stranger who violently was trying to kick down her door. She had a handgun and was prepared to use it. Fortunately, tragedy was averted. But I’m here to tell you that these problems that we’re experiencing, we don’t accept as the new normal for life in the city. I’m joined here tonight by five other residents from our community. We enjoy the diversity of our neighborhood, but we refuse to accept that these problems are new community standards that we have to accept. Feces, trash, petty crime, disturbance of the peace, and recurrent possibility of violence are not acceptable to me, and I expect a more effective response to these problems from our city leaders. Thank you for listening to my concerns.
Next speaker is Patricia Taylor, and then Elaine Jackson.
Mayor Steinberg, the city council. At the meeting you held yesterday on Del Paso Boulevard, we were told you plan to go ahead with the 300-bed temporary winter shelter on Railroad Drive and see how it works. And then, if that’s okay, after three or four months, you will go ahead with the 200-bed permanent shelter on Arden Way and Evergreen. Question, who will determine the criteria regarding how okay a 300-bed shelter is? I volunteer to be on that committee. We were told to, told, we were told to present you with conditions. I take this to mean that if you guarantee a certain conditions, we will not oppose what you were doing. I’ve also heard of some money being offered. How about this condition? Reduce that number of beds to what you plan for in other areas for the temporary shelter. And if it’s okay, then do the floor and road shelter that you keep talking about. And then if both of those are okay and work out, then you can consider something else in Del Paso. Think about it, what conditions would you ask for if a huge shelter were to be built 300 yards from your front door?
What conditions would you ask for if you’re fucking dying in the homeless?
Here are some conditions.
Fuck you!
Provide effective neighborhood security.
Absolute bullshit!
And clean up.
And the fact that we did, oh man, you have some nerve asking for respect, you know that? You have nerve asking for respect. From last week, you refused to hear the Indigenous Peoples’ Day community. Fuck all of you! You have no idea what respect actually means!
But I get threatened.
So your time has been stopped in order to give you the full ability to testify?
Here are some conditions that I thought of. Provide effective neighborhood security and clean up 24/7, and pay for it. Keep people from wandering and loitering in our business district and neighborhood during the day. Keep people off Royal Oaks Drive, so they do not interfere with children walking to and from school, or for customers going to the post office. The question that many of us hesitate to ask, because we will be called uncaring and selfish, is what will this do to the value of our homes in Woodlake? A comparative market analysis was done on my home in August, and it was found out that it plans to target our neighborhood with homeless shelters.
Can you give me your final thoughts, please?
Oh, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And next speaker is Elaine Jackson, and then Frenchie Stovanovic.
Hi, councilmembers. I was at the meeting last night with the councilpeople and the mayor. Most of the community was very upset, because we felt that the council did not listen to how we felt. I, for one, went door-to-door in my community, and know that 80% to 90% of the people are against you just pushing this through without any consideration for the people who live there. And I don’t want this to be about homeless versus people, because I took in two homeless people approximately 10 to 12 years ago, and they stayed with my home, at my home, and they were friends of my children. So this isn’t about that. This is about sharing out throughout the community, as I’ve mentioned before, I also spoke the last two weeks here, too. I feel that 100 people should be open right away in every district to help the homeless situation. 300 people in our district is a huge amount of people. I gave several of the councilmen and also the mayor information about different shelters that has problems around the community. I don’t think that that has been addressed at all. I know they think they have. You guys, we’re told us that you went to several shelters and were looking at different options there to what you do, but I ask you, did you go out and see what was happening in the community? Did you talk to the people around the community? Because that, if you didn’t do that, then you did not do full research on what’s happening, if you did not go out in the community. I also ask you if, why you’re not really caring about what we’re saying, because a lot of people felt very disrespected at the meeting. They did. They felt very disrespected. Almost everybody in my community did, because they don’t think that you were listening. And the triage center is too close to a neighborhood that has children walking home by themselves, okay? There’s small children walking home by themselves right by there. And I also want to address the affordable housing issue, too.
I’m sorry. I’m sorry.
I’ll be back next week.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Frenchie Stovanovic.
Frenchie’s an unhomed youth that came here, him and his girlfriend, they’re 18th and 19th, asked for help, and they got scared and they left when all this stuff happened with the police.
Thank you. Kristin Perry.
I know I’ve been here the last two weeks. I’m Kristin, I’m a new resident here. I work downtown, I rented in Midtown for a while, and I just wanted to come up and basically talk a little bit about how to help the homeless. I think my major thing is, it was a very emotional night last night. I appreciate you guys, you know, those of you who are there. I think it was exhausting, I think it was tiring, I think people were angry, I think people were scared, I think some confusing things kind of went on. But I think I’ve talked to some of the homeless people here, they weren’t at the meeting last night, but I think that Woodlake is made to be, look like, like they’re against helping the homeless. And, thank you, Wanda, and I really hate seeing this happen in communities when community engagement can, can happen while, by planning something like this, something major like this. I feel like we haven’t been given enough information, so I’m going out and seeking things on my own, I’m doing research. I would love for you to provide me with a model of a large shelter that has worked, that you’re, that you’re case-studying and modeling, both shelters after, both the emergency shelter and the site on Lumberjack, because I haven’t been able to find one. The closest one I’ve found is Hanson in Portland, which has been open one year, and the residents are being harassed, they’re bringing more homeless people to the, to the area, they’re not helping the homeless, they’re finding it less effective. So I ask you, please look, I’m sure you’ve looked at these models, I know you’ve gone and seen these places, and another question I have is, is anything in the city going to be this big? And if you’re busing people out of, say, downtown, midtown, and east sack into north sack, I really think that’s an act of social injustice, and we really need to visit that and talk about that. You know, we talk about being one community that we are, we’re uptown, we’re midtown, we’re downtown, we’re east sack, we’re land park, it’s, I’m sorry, Mr. Mayor, if I’m, but, okay, I know you’re listening, I just, I’m reading your body language, but I just, I just feel like we’re, I just, I just feel like, you know, we’re here to help, we’re not against homelessness, we don’t want to warehouse them, we don’t want to ghettoize them, we don’t want to put them somewhere where it’s not going to help them, so let’s help the homeless in the right way. Thank you. I know you’re working at it.
You know, sometimes we do sit up here, and the hours are long, and we listen a lot, and sometimes, yeah, I may appear a little bit tired, and sorry for that, but I want to tell you, last night we listened for, and participated for several hours. Today, I was at the County Board of Supervisors with Councilmember Chenier and our city staff, urging the county to put forward $54 million of their Proposition 63, their Mental Health Services Act dollars, to partner with us so that we can get thousands of people off the streets. I care about these sets of issues more than I care about just about anything, because I actually believe that this is an existential crisis in our city, and it threatens all the things that we aspire to. You make a good suggestion, by the way, and I want to respond to it now, instead of at the end of the testimony, and I’m looking at Mr. Roberts there in the fourth row, friend Darrell Roberts from North Sacramento. Darrell and his wife, Tina, last Sunday took a group of, of community members from North Sacramento down to the lead San Francisco triage center known as the Navigation Center. And out of that arose, I think, a very important and interesting idea that I’m just going to put out right now. I would like... I would like for us, the city, together with the neighborhood leadership, to organize another trip to San Francisco with the leaders of the North Sacramento community, or any member of the North Sacramento community, but other neighborhood leaders from throughout the entire city, from all the neighborhoods that you have just described. Let's go down there together so that we can separate fear from fact, so we can separate stereotype from reality, so we can discuss the real challenges. We have, and Councilmember Warren, I'm going to tell you, has been brave, in my opinion. We went out to North Sacramento, and I'm sorry, you may disagree, but we were very, very specific in laying out a set of conditions and said very openly, we want to sit down with a representative group of neighbors and talk to you about that. And by the way, those conditions include opening other triage centers in other parts of the city. And we tried to explain to you the practical and logistical challenges of finding a site where the ownership is willing, the owner of the property is willing, and that's large enough for us to be able to affect this homeless problem at some form of scale. So I want to put that out there, that I'm willing to organize one of the auspices of my office with my colleagues and with the neighborhood leadership, Mr. Roberts and others, a trip to San Francisco, a trip to San Francisco with anybody who is interested, and we'll go down multiple times if we have to, to look at the Navigation Center so that we can have that, continue to have that reason. Last thing, I'm going to say this, because myth and fact is very, very important. I was very clear yesterday, and so was Councilmember Warren, that when this council takes up the issue of a permanent triage center, it will not make a decision about the North Sacramento site, the Lumberjack site, until the late winter, early spring. Think about transparency and process. I promise you, you will be exhausted by the process, because we will take it that seriously. Excuse me. Thank you. Let's move on.
Our next speaker is Kendall Mangucci, and then Richard Wake.
Hi. My name is Kendis. Good evening. You know, thanks for being up there and being willing to listen to us. About a year ago, I was asked to be an editor on a policy recommendations report to the city of Hayward. I'm not a researcher, but I became familiar with that city's policy proposals. And this morning, I did something I haven't done since I was a CUB reporter at my first newspaper job, which was I watched the County Board of Supervisors meeting. I think the city council is a little more accessible than the county, you know? They meet in the morning, in the middle of the week, and their long-range coordinated plans are ongoing. And I got the feeling that without their funding support, these proposed shelters could not be funded. So there's got to be an end game for the city here. You can't just be leasing things without any funding. And the other thing is about affordable housing. With the SRO units and the hotels, the 712 units that could be lost here in the central city, as well as the city and county's repeal of the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, it might be good to get a little more transparency and sunshine on that issue, especially affordable housing. That's where we're going in the future. Be happy to share my contact information also. You know, I want to be part of it.
Please.
Thank you so much.
Please do.
Next speaker is Richard Wake, and then Paula Dula.
Thanks for letting me speak. Pardon my appearance this evening. I came from my final physical therapy appointment on a bum knee that I've had the last couple of months. Anyways, I thought it was great that you guys recognized breathe California, but it does seem kind of ironic that even after the governor declared a state of emergency on the outbreak of hepatitis A in California, that we're not discussing opening up public restrooms and hand-washing stations throughout the city. And, you know, one of the candidates down in San Diego, who I strongly support, that's running for county supervisor, Nathan Fletcher, is speaking very strongly about this issue. I also find it very ironic that two of our local officials, who are physicians, Senator Pan and Congressman Bera, are keeping their mouths shut about this. They're not really doing anything. When I spoke to Congresswoman Matsui's office, they seemed to be very well aware of the problem. So we need to think about opening up public restrooms and hand-washing stations throughout the city very soon, and do it now to avoid a public health crisis. The last thing I would like to say is, you know, the people from Woodlake have been talking about, you know, complaining about the homeless people in their area. It's coming down into City Council District 5, too. I'm trying to get a cleanup day going with Councilmember Chenier's staff person. But here's the thing. There's a group of Facebook people out there called the Land Park Society. They're in City Council District 4. I'm not a member of that Facebook page, but some of their posts are outright hateful and disgusting. All they're doing is rousting people out of City Hall, out of the Land Park area. So what I would recommend is that the people of Woodlake, go have a talk with Mr. Hanson up here in District 4, and ask him to polite... And I'm sure that there's good people in the Land Park Society, but for some of those people, the only thing really missing is Dirty Harry Callahan and the 44 Magnum. And they want to get private security? We're going to have another Trayvon Martin on our hands if that allows to happen. I would strongly recommend that the people of Woodlake, go have a talk with City Council Member Hanson, and ask him to quit having the Land Park Society, quit pushing homeless people into other neighborhoods. That would help the Woodlake area immensely.
Thank you.
Paula Dyla, and then Sandra Betancourt. Paula?
Good evening. I am Paula Dula. I live in North Sacramento, District 2. I purchased a home 14 years ago in a very nice, quiet neighborhood. Within the last couple of years, we have had a lot of unknown people walking up and down our streets or on bicycle. Our mail is stolen. You know, if we're not standing there when the mailman comes, we don't get our packages. Two weeks ago, there was an attempted break-in at my house in the middle of the night. I was house-sitting for a friend, so I wasn't there. It was after 1:00 a.m., and they broke out a window and traumatized my cats that were in the house. They pulled things out of the house through the broken window, and when they weren't able to really get in, they gave up, and then they went and vandalized my neighbor's car, stole several items out of that. So my neighborhood has more than our share of people who don't live there, who, I don't know, for a better lack of, you know... A lot of times, people are casing our street, but there are a lot of people who don't live on our street, and more and more. Every week, there are more people that are being pushed from downtown into North Sacramento. So we're overflowing. I do not agree on having another place to bring more people in, to run businesses out, to run us out. I do recommend that, you know, maybe look at the old Army Depot, look at Mather. There are already buildings there that could house people. There are medical facilities that could help people.
Thank you.
But that... Oh, thank you. I'm out of time. Thank you for this.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Sandra Betancourt, and then Pat Yanes.
I am Sandra Betancourt, and I am here to speak with you this evening concerning some concerns regarding the homeless. I'm not going to tell you that we in the District 2 area are having something out for the homeless. Quite the contrary. There's no person alive that deserves to have to sleep in the brush, to be cold, to be wet, or to be hungry. What I am here to talk to you about is decision-making and what you were elected to do as the council. You were elected to serve the districts that you represent. You were not elected to be the emperor of any of these districts, to make decisions without constituent buy-in. The Army Depot was just mentioned. Mather was just mentioned. And today on the radio, Councilmember Warren spoke of the homeless veterans. I do, for a fact, know that Sacramento's impact team has worked with many of the veterans, and that Mather is the spot that would be best suited to help rehabilitate. For any of us to sit here and think that a person who has been on the street for years and years can be put into a box with 299 other people and their dogs and cats and be happy in that one spot is ludicrous. I ask you to really sit down and think about this. I ask you to not vote on this on the 24th. You haven't done your homework. You have not exercised due diligence. And yes, I will go to San Francisco with Darrell. I'm not going to be closed-minded about this. Something has to be done. And for those of you who wonder if I just don't know about homeless people, I am the community leader in the neighborhood, who's vagrant, chronic inebriate, resident... She's not a resident. She just squats in houses, paraded around our neighborhood a year and a half ago with a human skull on a stick. And I don't intend to live with that any longer.
Thank you very much.
Following Ms. Yanes is Jason Demoss and Kalishna Epps.
I am a homeowner. I pay taxes. I vote. I live in my community. I do not trust nor respect my city council representative. He has seen fit to put five pot distribution centers within a mile of my community, and now this, temporary locations for housing people. Other districts have said no, not in my neighborhood, and you have said, "Got it. Okay," and moved on. But in my district, we said no, and you chose not one, not two, but three temporary locations. I say no, not in my neighborhood. But I also am giving you a solution. The Army Depot. Number one, over 500, almost 500 acres that can handle new growth, as we know that will also happen. Two, light rail and RT accessibility. Three, room for indoor or outdoor camping, as they choose. Four, bathrooms to use, as they choose, instead of our streets, homes, and parks. Space and buildings to house all the services that they need at one location. Our community does not have safe streets, walkways, or lighting, which they would need to get to and from these temporary locations, since I have paid into the California and federal tax system all my working life, over 45 years of service. I do believe I have a say in what and where my tax dollars are being used for, and even with the federal grant monies, it still comes from my tax dollars. Wherever the accounting process is, tax dollars are being used. And the only fit I see that is a good fit would be the Army Depot. It just makes the most sense for a one-time, permanent location.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is Jason Demoss here, or Kalishna Epps? I believe they've left. Thank you. Faygo, and then Wanda.
that are here today, and strongly encourage the city to adopt their resolution acknowledging Indigenous Peoples' Day and no longer celebrating Christopher Columbus Day. It's a shame that we are celebrating a genocidal maniac and rapist. So let's fix that. Let's not have that be something that Sacramento honors. Onto the homeless situation. Looking at the course of actions this last past year, Warren had already proposed a tent city in his district, in a location that there wasn't that much uproar about. People from that community were actually coming out saying they would have enjoyed it. Although some members of the community were being vocal about saying that they would like that in that area, the original location. Then, now we're trying to warehouse everybody in a part of the district that doesn't want it. So I'm kind of confused about the process that's going on with that. I do think we should move forward with shelters as quick as possible, because we need to get people off the streets. People are going to die on the streets. And I already know some of the process you guys are talking about is catering to those people that are already in their neighborhood right now that they're complaining about. So where they're not getting, the idea of getting them off of the streets is going to help, even if I don't agree with the warehousing part, that's still getting people off the streets. It's not bringing more people into your streets. It's getting them off of the streets, out of your neighborhood, and into services and programs so that your streets will be cleaner and safer. So I really wish people would focus on the getting people off the streets part, as well as dealing with this hepatitis A concern. I've already heard there's been another case found in Sacramento, and it was a food handler. So let's get some bathrooms all over the city, because no district should have to deal with feces on the street, and nobody should have to be dehumanized and potentially risk being arrested as a sex offender for having to use the bathroom.
Thank you, Faygo.
So Wanda's next, and then Eric Frame.
I also concur with the indigenous people. We need to stop the Columbus Day celebration because it was all about their genocide and raping their children and their women, and then this on the homeless. I'm very proud of the city council for coming up with this, trying to come up with a solution. Warehousing isn't the best, but it's better than being on the street. I think you guys have worked very hard this last year trying to come up with solutions. People that are living in the area may not see that what is positive is going to come out of all this. For one thing, they're not seeing the fact that the people will be staying in the residence and being bused away when they need to be bused away. They're not going to be roaming. They don't get that. They need to give you guys a chance to find out how this works. I am all for what you guys are doing. I'm very proud of having a triage center. If you guys would want to take it out to Elk Grove, I wouldn't care. I would think we're treating these people that are homeless like they're animals. We don't want them in our backyard. We don't want them there. We don't want them here. We don't want them there. Where do we want them? Where is it that people should be allowed to house themselves?
Where?
Where? If you don't want them there, and we don't want them there, and they don't want them there, where? Then where? We need to come up with a solution. The council has come up with a solution. We have to start somewhere. And starting with what they're doing right now and following through with everything, you're going to find out maybe you were wrong about how you guys feel in Lakewood.
Next speaker is Eric Frame, and then Sarah Thomas.
Hello. All right, I'd like to echo the fact that we should have Indigenous Peoples' Day in replacement of Columbus Day, just for the sake of the truth and for the native people. I'm disappointed to see that the homeless shelter in District 2 is not even on the agenda. We could at least discuss it. In fact, homelessness is not on the agenda at all. I haven't seen people come in here begging to rename a park walkway or begging for sewer credits, yet both of those are on the agenda ahead of homelessness. And we see homeless advocates come here every week. Homelessness should be number one, two, three, four, five. In fact, it should be one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Each one of your districts should work on a shelter and affordable housing, real affordable This city has spent our tax dollars on a $400 million arena. They've spent it on $100,000 additions on the Memorial Auditorium. They've spent it on 12 dog shelters.
Dog shelters.
Dog shelters. Before, human... Dog shelters, before human shelters. They've spent our tax dollars on dog shelters before human shelters. I don't see people begging for dog shelters either. I do see people begging for human shelters, though. You even spent some of our money voting to give yourselves a raise recently. I'm sure that passed. Why have public bathrooms and water fountains been shut off? Why can't we use some of the numerous vacant buildings and vacant lots in this city to start fixing the housing crisis? Let's build one tiny home, just for me. How about that? Just one tiny home, good PR, it's an evidence-based solution, and it's a housing-first solution. You guys have ignored us for eight months coming in here, at least when I was here. It's more like years, I should say.
Thank you.
But you've ignored us for eight years, let's just say that.
Thank you, Eric.
And what you've brought us now is a plan that's deliberately divisive. You brought us a deliberately divisive plan.
Thank you, Eric.
My next speaker. My next speaker is Sarah Thomas. Following Ms. Thomas is Armando Flores.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Sarah, and I am the Education and Program Manager at Fairy Tale Town. And I just wanted to take a couple minutes of your precious time to let you know about some exciting things happening at Fairy Tale Town this month. All month long, we're collecting new and gently-used shoes for men, women, and children. All types and sizes of shoes will be collected, cleaned, and redistributed for families in need in Sacramento through a local nonprofit named Shoes for Sacramento. Families who donate a pair of shoes will also receive a discount on admission at Fairy Tale Town. Guests will receive one free child admission with the purchase of an adult admission and donation of new or gently-used pair of shoes during the entire month of October. Our first collection bin is already overflowing, and we're eager to see how many more we can get by the end of the month. We are also excited about our Star Wars-themed Safe and Super Halloween event that is actually coming up this Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. This three-night event features 15 treat stations, a nightly costume parade, hands-on activities, and lots of fun for families and kids. You'll be able to meet your favorite intergalactic characters, take part in Jedi training, lightsaber fitness, travel to Dagobah and/or tattooing, and it will be out of this world. We also wanted to take just a couple minutes to acknowledge our friends and neighbors at the zoo and congratulate them on their 90-year anniversary. I will leave these flyers with you guys. If you have any questions, feel free to track us down at Fairy Tale Town.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Armando Flores, and then James Jackson.
Good evening, council. I was very insulted by the mayor trying to get us to not speak today. That was an awful offer from you.
Excuse me. Excuse me. Excuse me. Excuse me. Armando, excuse me. If you want to provide testimony to it, please don't call out any council member. Please don't call out the mayor.
I'm just pointing out something that happened a few minutes ago.
I'm just saying, please do not, do not call out any council member.
Why can't I say what happened a few minutes ago? Why can't I speak on it?
I'm asking you to do so, sir.
Why can't I speak on it?
You can speak on the subject. You don't call out a council member or the mayor.
Okay. Can I get my time back, please? Okay, so I was insulted that that was proposed, that the public will reduce the amount of time that we could speak. It's ridiculous. You guys were not here last week. We were not advised on time that you guys were not going to be here. It's very disrespectful to our people that you just canceled the meeting at the last minute. This city, you guys claim it's a number-one, first-class city? I'm embarrassed to even hear you say that. You are doing nothing to accomplish that. You have people coming in from the zoo asking for $75 million for repairs at the zoo? Where's the money for the people? You should be thinking of the people of Sacramento. Animals are right. I agree. Animals need a place to live. But $75 million is a lot of money. You can't find $10 million, $5 million for a shelter for people, but you allow those people to come and talk about getting $75 million, and you even give them more than half an hour of the time? And we're allowed two minutes? How is that right? You need to lift the anti-homeless ordinance in Sacramento. We are having a horrible, horrible hepatitis epidemic going in Sacramento and in San Diego and in LA. Even the governor just declared a state of emergency on that. And what money are we getting for the bathrooms and places for people to wash their hands? None. You need to work on that. This epidemic is going to be horrible. It's going to kill a lot of people. It could even kill you. So, you need to work on it.
Thank you, sir.
Speaker, next speaker is James J. Jackson Jr., and then Florella Lima. James left foot. Thank you. Florella.
I support the life, liberty, equality, and truth, not genocide, rape, oppression, and lies. On behalf of Cosecha, Serge, and the Sacramento community, we are asking the city council to agendize and support the resolution to recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day on the second Monday of October in lieu of Christopher Columbus Day. To pick off where one of my comrades, Raymond, was cut off, not only did Christopher Columbus kidnap and transport thousands of indigenous people to Spain as slaves and force others to labor in mines and on plantations on their own land, but he is also responsible for the brutal murder and rape of women and children. The myth perpetuated by the celebration of Columbus Day condones the lasting effects of genocide and colonization fueled by racism. A transition from recognizing Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day would place Sacramento amongst the California cities honoring the culture, heritage, and traditional lifeways of native peoples in history, as well as recognizing Sacramento's present native communities, particularly of Miwok and Ma'au heritage. Ultimately, everyone in our community would benefit from recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day, especially in light of the recent acts of racial violence perpetuated around the country in the name of hate. This proposal gives you an opportunity to take a real step towards healing. Therefore, we and I, as an indigenous woman, as a Latina woman, respectfully request that Sacramento's City Council formally acknowledge Indigenous Peoples' Day. Thank you.
Next speaker is Richard Wilks. Following Mr. Wilks is Karen Redmond.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, thank you for giving us all the time that you have to speak today. I also, like John had said, am a resident of the Creamery in the Ocala Flat neighborhood, and we're extremely happy to be there. He told you about some of the problems that we're having. I want to make sure that you know that we are speaking about these problems, not wanting to just complain. We would love to be part of the solution as well. I also want to acknowledge you, Mr. Mayor, for all of the work that you've done in the past few months towards solving the problem of the unhoused in the city. And I know we need long-term solutions, but in the meantime, some short-term solutions could be helping to take care of these unhoused people on the streets, basic human needs. And I know a couple of people have already mentioned having public restrooms, water fountain, garbage cans, things that are, again, you know, part of basic human needs. So, I want to, you know, speak for the people that agree with me in the room and in the city, that we know what you're doing is trying to make progress, and we want to be patient, and we want to be involved. And as a property owner and as a member of the Creamery Housing Association, I'd like to be part of the solution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen Redmond, and then David Andre.
I would also like to thank the mayor and two city council members, whom I will not name, because I don't want to break your rules, for coming over to North Sacramento to talk to our community last night. I went with the expectation that you would provide information about the two proposed shelters. I heard lots of impassioned speeches, but I still don't know any more than I learned from the Sacramento Bee on September 20th. And I'm not one to make up my mind without some solid information. I did hear our mayor say, yes, we have a plan. So, I went home and eagerly searched cityofsacramento.org for homelessness plan. That search brought 4,996 results, 307 in the last year. So, I can see that you've been doing a lot of planning. Now, I admit I didn't read all 307 documents and webpages, but I didn't find one with the plan to open a permanent, high-capacity, low-barrier shelter in a residential area near an elementary school within the next 10 months. So, I still don't know any more than I read in the Sacramento Bee on September 20th. Most, if not all of us, recognize that homelessness is a crisis, and it is one that did not manifest itself overnight. In my view, a humanitarian crisis of this magnitude deserves a comprehensive plan to address it.
David Andre, and then Joan Louis Kennard.
Afternoon, everybody. Thank you for letting me speak. I too would like to say that we need to get rid of Columbus Day. A lot of us in public school were fed false information. We were deliberately taught that this guy Columbus was some type of hero, when actually he was a rapist, murderer, and responsible for one of the greatest genocides that's ever happened. So, I think the least we can do as a city is to acknowledge Indigenous Peoples' Day as a first step towards making sure we never go down that path. And with the current national situation, it seems like we're headed down those old paths once more. The other thing I'd like to talk about today earlier, there were two unhomed teens here. One's 18, one's 19. They're homeless tonight. They left when people started, from the DAAS, started threatening to get the police on people. They got nervous and split. I was going to try to get them help tonight. One of the reasons they can't get help is because these navigators that we're paying for, they're not available to these teens. They're not. These kids are on the street tonight. I'm going to try to go find them, because they haven't been mugged or raped or anything yet. They're recently on the streets. And within a couple weeks, stuff's going to happen to them. So, really, if you guys could have any pull with these navigators, get them to go out there and look for some of these teenagers and younger. There's people on the streets with babies. I hear people from Woodlake talking about that they don't want homeless people walking down the street where their children are going to school. There's homeless kids from this area that are on the street tonight. We've got to help them first. Thank you.
David, I think you've seen on several occasions that people have come to the chamber and they've needed help, and we've been able to give them assistance and be able to help them. And we're the same council that wants to help these young teens as well. So, if there's a way that you can get them back in the chamber or get them back to us, we'd be more than willing to get them to our Impact Team and see what we can do to help them.
If I may respectfully ask something, we do, a bunch of us do a dinner out here. We never see any of these navigators there. We need, and that's when the kids come to eat. Thank you.
Next speaker is Joan Louis Kennard, and then Robert Copeland. Kennard?
Well, I belong to Sacramento Tents Union and Sacramento Homeless Organized Community. We want the homeless off the streets and in permanent shelter, permanent housing. And as far as this housing choice, vouchers? A lot of people that get them, they can't find a place. So, the mayor's plan is not going to work unless there's landlords willing to take the vouchers. Can you work on that, the city council? And as far as what David Andre said about these navigators, can they go to Lowe's and Fisher's? There's a lot of homeless people there. Because I've heard Sacramento's steps forward is not that great. And as far as Woodlake, I'm willing to work with them to find an adequate place for the homeless population. I'm going to ask the Sacramento Tents Union to help. We need more affordable housing. We need people that risk becoming homeless not to become homeless. I was at a meeting over at Mercy Housing on 7th and 8th Street last Tuesday, before I thought the city council was going to meet, and they said LA got 14,000 people off the street that were homeless, and there's homeless population, one in 20%. So, their plan ain't working. If more people are becoming homeless and that are, them becoming housed, it ain't working. And as far as that, each and every one of the council districts, ask the people what they really want in their neighborhood, like, let's say, grocery stores, jobs, safer neighborhoods, housing. I'm talking about affordable housing, not a housing for the rich population. I want to see housing for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Jane McCauley, and then McWorthy.
Hi, I'm Jane McCauley. I'm a resident of District 2. I was at the community meeting last night for the homeless shelter and was unable to get these questions answered, so I was hoping to get them answered tonight. First question, are these proposals exempt from CEQA? Are the shelters at Railroad and Evergreen exempt from CEQA? I asked my planner in our neighborhood, and he said that it was not yet determined. I was wondering if that has changed since it's a month away from the operator potentially getting in there and opening up the doors. That's my first question. The second one, does the railroad shelter have any type of emergency designation? And if so, is there a start and an end time to that designation? And then lastly, the county has allocated dollars and time to clean up the parkway. Is the city or the operator prepared to contribute to the county's cleanup efforts if those efforts are reversed with the shelter folks traveling over to the parkway?
So, I'm happy to answer your questions. If you want to call my office tomorrow, either myself or my staff, Jacob Baitel, we're happy to answer. They're clear answers to all those questions. We're happy to answer them for you. Thank you.
I've sent it in a letter, and I've also done a public records request. I haven't gotten it yet.
Just call us tomorrow. We'll have a conversation. We'd be happy to answer the questions, okay?
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Next speaker is McWorthy, and then Mary Topol.
People, we, it's a disgrace here in this town. Now, this supposed to have been in the Brown Act, but you will pass stuff trying to get rid of me. I'm here under the Freedom of Information on the Federal Government. This should have been in Attorney Ru Act, could have told these people right up front. It wasn't your responsibility, Clay. It was the rhetoric. Now, unless you can bring back detectives to help here, you got a problem here, because the whole house in LA is on fire, and bullets are falling in Las Vegas. But we got a problem here. Now, two weeks ago, there's three little kids, little black girls came here. It's Parks and Recreation. We had one young black man. Now, pedophile talk. Hypothetically, I have raised this elsewhere. The little girls are vulnerable, the little black girls, and hope the Asian girls talk, because Rick Jennings' wife didn't talk when it happened before.
Excuse me. Excuse me.
Freedom of information? You ran under your name. If you don't want your name, get the hell out of here. That's the bottom line.
All right. So, you're...
That's it, Mr. Worthy. You want to swear? See you later.
Your language is inappropriate. Your language is inappropriate, sir.
Good to see you.
Now, what we look at, the three little girls here is vulnerable. Yeah. They sit here, and we've heard the go-on of the Friday nights, under the skies, under the blankets, burning your popcorn. That's pedophile talk. And here is the man that speaks pedophile talk, acting as the Asian. Here's the man right here. You should have left here up in the cabin there, because I'm going to stay on top of it. There's conflict of interest in cars. I talk about it in that area. I talked about it in that area near the weekend, and see what they would say. But people, wake up. You are not a leader. You are representing --
Your time is up.
This reason, this is not in the --
Your time is up.
This is not in the law because you pretend to be a leader.
Your time is up, sir. Thank you.
But you better try to do the game respect.
Thank you. Turn his mic off, please. Turn his mic off. Thank you, sir.
My next speaker is Mary Topple. Following Ms. Topple is Christopher McNeil.
First of all, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, nothing I say here, I want to detract from this last Saturday's wonderful Rio, I don't know how to pronounce it, Rio Velo, maybe? Rio Velo event? And I was there, and lots of people were enjoying it. I was just sorry that more of the young people that I understood were coming that I had told about the event didn't show up. But anyway, everyone there got lots of goodies, including the young people who did show up that I knew, and they got lots because there wasn't much competition. So thank you very much to Councilman Harris and all the others who helped organize that, and to Councilman Harris, a big congratulations on his leadership in the Lower American River Parkway, well, in the parkway, cleaning up the Lower American River Parkway, and also for getting the funding for the American River Conservancy. I really appreciate that, and I've been concerned about equal justice for all people along the Lower American River Parkway in the nearby vicinity, such as Lower Del Paso Boulevard area. And there is no environmental justice for anybody without an equal measure of social justice. There is no social justice for anybody in our community without an equal measure of environmental justice. Particularly for lower-income youth, this has always been a problem. In the North Area, most of our youth are, like most of the people of color, and most of them are low-to-moderate income people. And that said, I realize just this past Sunday watering, planting, native wild rose planting that we have at Sutter's Landing Park that started from your predecessor, Councilman Harris, Steve Cohen's time, the council office gave us funding to help the young people and myself with refreshments after we did this work. I realize I've been dressing down in the parkway. I kept a shirt on before, but this is one of my shirts that's a little more ripped up and patched than a lot. But I always dress like this in the parkway so I don't look like I have anything to steal because I've been attacked from behind from people trying to steal from me. And I go to businesses, and I keep my behavior nice afterwards. No one has ever not allowed me to. It's behavioral thing.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your testimony.
You're welcome.
My next speaker is Christopher McNeil, and then Eric Hoover.
My name is Christopher McNeil. I am a resident of District 4, and I would like to thank you guys for all being so very generous with your time. I know that no city is perfect, and you guys are just trying to make it a little bit more so. And to do my part in aiding that, I want, I'm here on behalf of my good friend Arkady Oslinski, who is also a member of District 4, who is still in ICU at the UC Davis Medical Center. He was struck by a van on F. and 20th Street just a couple of weeks ago. Councilmember Steve Hanson knows Arkady pretty well, and he exemplifies everything that is really wonderful about our city. He is a driven, passionate individual who is, lights up a room and brings joy to people's lives on a regular basis. And unfortunately, he's in an induced coma and may be paralyzed. It is a prevalent problem in Sacramento for pedestrian safety. As we continue to grow and become a larger, more industrious city, this is an issue that we need to take more and more consideration of. I know that Sacramento is deemed one of the 30 most dangerous cities in California for drivers, pedestrians, and cyclists. We, over 16 percent of injuries that involve automobiles also involve pedestrians, which is much higher than the 11 percent national average. And I hope that each and every one of you on the council can keep that in mind in the future as we continue to grow to make sure that everybody stays a little bit safer and can walk the streets in this beautiful city, enjoy the lovely weather, and go on a bike ride, and not, and be a little bit more aware that you guys are doing their part to make sure that they're safe. Thank you so much.
My next speaker is Eric Hoover. And following Mr. Hoover is the last one for matters not on the agenda, Richard Miller.
I am sorry to come here because I need to open up something that's bugging me. On the first Friday, animals took me to UC Davis. I took about 11 pain medicine. And it came from a trigger of a person who wanted to stay overnight, you know, with me. To a point, more stress point, I had a point with Kaiser, and they helped me with two RT passes. I got on Friday, last Friday, to take Recyclers in for American Soda. And now a problem, let me say, Riverside Food Bank don't have a policy to go back a second time. It's their policy. And right now, I have to ask the neighbor for cash, $10 for our recent transit pass, and also money to get milk, hot dogs, and things. And last week, I saw something that was really bugging. Someone could have church and say, hey, let's take you out to, you know, hey, pay-for-food talk. When someone has low esteem, where's the compassion when you need it? The church don't even want to give food out anymore. The Comerica Church has a policy of no money. Even the church I went to one time piled there. So I'm saying to myself, and myself being with God, where's compassion? You know, when you need it, take them shopping, get the food you need. So now, the Comerica Church is asking you guys from the City of California Legislature to help them in food. Where's compassion in taking someone to the store, buying food, and helping them? So I got a problem. Right now, I'm resolving this day with Social Security and my P.E. I got a new P.E., but in some sense, I don't know when I'm going to get money in the bank. And so this month's been most difficult. And I blame the system, right hand, not to the left hand. I was told the new P.E. service room will be taking over to November. Where is -- I'm sorry.
Let us see, like Vice Mayor Jennings mentioned a few moments ago, when somebody comes forward that is in need of help, if we can't resolve it in the few minutes here at the dais, we can link you right now with an expert member of our city staff to try to help you with the problem, okay? And it sounds like it has something to do with P.E. and your --
It's already taken care of. It's just right now I'm in a limbo, in a hole.
Who's here? Mr. Chan? The manager? Who? Arturo Sanchez is just, is right outside there. He'll meet you right in the back, and we'll see if we can help you, okay?
All right.
Thank you, sir. Hang in there.
My last speaker is Richard Miller.
Thank you. Rich Miller, patient advocate. I, too, attended that meeting last night in Del Paso Heights, and I must commend you for moving forward. As I deal with patients on an everyday basis, and I know the plight of being homeless, as myself have had, living in a tent for over two years due to a medical condition that left me unable to afford my own financial needs. I have succumbed to the worst conditions, so I know what those conditions are out there. Although I have a strong will in mind, I was able to work through it and find housing and get employment and get back into society. But more often than not, there are individuals out there that do suffer mental illness, and we've taken all those services from them. So as we move forward, I want you to continue to move forward. Because as I heard in that meeting last night, that it was pretty much 50/50, people wanting it and people not wanting it. But no matter where we go from here on, we have to think of the compassion of the individual. It's a humanitarian effort, and we must move forward in a positive direction. As we move forward in this positive direction, I do think Del Paso Heights is a good place. I think we start with those individuals that are homeless in that area first and give them places to live. Resorting them into a warehouse situation in the industrial area is not suited for them because they will not have the transitory needs to get to the facilities they need to get the treatment that they so desire. As we move forward, I'd also ask, if you do make this final determination to make in that area, that you hire 90 percent of the employees that work at the housing development to get them homes and make it a priority that they come from Del Paso Heights first. In addition, I would ask that you take all that spending power that you have and put that to that community as well. Address those needs. I do think Del Paso Heights can set a model of a resource for the individuals of that community, and I hope you move forward.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your time. Thank you very much for your testimony. Okay. Well, thank you very much. That was, covered a lot of topics tonight, and we appreciate all the testimony for items not on the agenda, and we do listen to it all. Let us move to the consent calendar. Are there any members who want to speak on any matters on the consent conference? We're going to do this in reverse. We have four members of the public who want to testify, but let's hear from the members first. I've got Councilmember Chenier.
I'm happy to go after a public comment, if you want to do that.
Okay. Councilman Harris, what about yourself? After public comment. Okay, let's hear the four public comments. Thank you.
I have three speakers on the consent calendar.
Three, excuse me.
Macworthy on item number one, Kevin Carter on item number 11, and then Robert Copeland on item number 29.
People, you need more than a committee on water. See, you lied to get bonds, and here now you want a committee. Now, a water meter to a duplex go through to one house. But at my house, you charged me on the front house with three rooms and a water meter on the back house. Is there any engineers here? How do you do it when the water going through one meter? Somebody lying here. You need more than a committee. You need an, and a committee to go to the neighbors and make reports and come back. Because the fact of cubic foot is like commercial. Why cubic foot is like commercials, and you are telling my wife that you are doing a test for 44 days on the front house and the back house, right across the street, gets one field, you've got the same two houses. So what are you doing? Is somebody targeting Macworthy? I say, come on, bring it on. Because I'm ready for it, because you know you lied when you brought the water meter to see, and it wasn't going to save no water. It going to price the water. That's all it would do, price the water. And if you want to let light commercial go at cubic foot, let the poor folks use their cubic foot. Because of what going to go, the rental property. No tenant should ever pay for water in garbage. Due to the circumstances that their marginal profit, when you brought those developers in is so small, nobody went to bat on what is the right of rental and what is they can write off. A rental piece of property, the landlord can write it off, a water sewer and garbage. We watch the tax situation come up. These are the things that you could create a committee to talk to these people on what is the tax situation going to come with your water meter. What is the water meter going to do for them? The water meter not going to do anything for poor folks. Ain't no water meter going to do anything for poor folks. But if you create a committee --
Your time is up, Mr. Worthy. Thank you.
What they going to study if you create it?
Thank you, Mr. Worthy. Next.
My next speaker is Kevin Carter.
Which item, sir?
Mayor Steinberg, city council members, I'm speaking on item 11. I'm a longtime Oak Park resident. I worked for Park and Recreation from the age of 15 until I was 23. And from that, after a few years later, I worked with the youth, baseball, Oak Park Little League. Oak Park Little League is the oldest Little League in the state of California. It's the only one that holds a gold charter. And in saying that, I've had experience in Oak Park Little League. And not only that, Sam Pennell is not here no longer, but he was one of my coaches for ASA softball. And a lot of you don't know, the state of California is, was second in the nation in ASA youth softball from the year of 1974 to '76, and I was experienced on that team. But in saying that, I worked with the youth in Oak Park Little League, in which I took them to Williamsport, Pennsylvania in 2007, and to St. Louis for the All-Star Game in 2009. But even saying that, the fields themselves, those fields are very unsafe for our youth. They've been that way for years. They've been trampled on by soccer and football and other sports. And the most important thing to me is the safety of the children, all the way from T-ball on up. And I'd just like to see that you guys pass this resolution to make sure that these kids are allowed to play on a safe field. There's nothing like getting a ground ball that comes directly at you that doesn't hit you in the face and cause some type of injury. And that's been my biggest concern for the youth out there today. And I'm also a member of the Oak Park Little League Board. So it's very important that you guys pass this legislation. It's very important to the youth out there.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Thank you so much. Yes, I appreciate you pointing that out for youth.
Robert Copeland, and then Eric Frame.
The streetcar, 29.
Okay.
I'd like to know what the Sacramento city obligations to this RT for the streetcar is. I don't know nothing about that. And I'm, I belong to Sacramento Township. I'm totally against a streetcar because I don't know enough about it. And I think it's, how should I say, boondoggle for one? But getting back to the subject, where's it going, what's going to be built? How many riders? What's the fair going to be? And what's that? I don't know nothing about the streetcar, enough about the streetcar, but I'm totally against, from what I understand. I don't think we need a streetcar in Sacramento. Because RT in the Sacramento County, includes Sacramento City, should fix, maintain the regular RT bus system and light rail cars and not have the streetcar. I think it's a waste of money. We've got aging light rail fleet, and everybody that's a city council member that's on RT board knows that. What are you going to do about that? So this is a waste of time and money. Thank you.
And our last speaker is Eric Frame.
Which item?
Number 17. So as we all know, the FBI called Sacramento the hub of child trafficking, and KCRA 3 reported that we are the second-worst child trafficking city in the USA. I see that we have an internet task force to, I'm wondering what it's, is it combating cyberbullying? Is it going after buyers of underage prostitution? Or I would hope it's going after the traffickers themselves? Because that's what we really need, is to go after the traffickers of the child prostitution that's running rampant in this city. Our police are awfully busy enforcing an inhumane and unconstitutional no camping ordinance. It's taken a lot of their resources. I know only two officers are on the human trafficking right now in Sacramento. And we should repeal the inhumane and unconstitutional anti-camping ordinance and start getting the police on real crimes, such as the child trafficking and the drug trafficking going on in Sacramento. We're, again, the hub of child trafficking, according to the FBI. So we're wasting our resources, our police force and their resources and their time trafficking the homeless around, unconstitutionally, I might add, again. So I know the DA recently did a sting which cited some buyers of underage prostitution, but they managed to get zero of the traffickers. So we need someone to investigate the child trafficking in Sacramento, please. Thank you.
Okay. We have two members that want to speak on the consent calendar. If I recall, I'd first call Councilmember Chenier.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to actually speak briefly on item 11, just to say thank you to Chris Conlon and his staff for applying for these funds. This kind of complements a number of grants and city investments in McClatchy Park over the last, probably -- the last probably five years. The largest being a $2.8 million state grant, which brought us the skate park and renewed tennis courts, irrigation systems, and others. We built the farmer's market, overhangs. We put new bathrooms in. We've done some work on the ballfields, but Mr. Carter is absolutely right, and the ballfields are in pretty horrible shape. And this $800,000 will allow us to completely redo the ballfields, the backstops, the seats there, put a new sign up, Mr. Roberts, for those who founded the Little League. And so I'm excited about that. So, Chris, wherever you guys are, and Shannon, for your staff, they're back there. Thank you for your work on this. Nothing moves quickly, and I assume that we'll be going out to bid on this, and hopefully it will be ready for the next season. That would be my hope. I also want to highlight item 30 on this. And I think this is an important thing, and as the mayor said, a number of us were in Austin last week and looked at so many of the exciting things that are going on in the city of Austin. Although they have some major challenges, and their biggest challenges, I think, are infrastructure around transportation and housing. What item 30 does is really move us along the road on working in partnership with other organizations around transit-oriented development. RT has got a group that's working on this as well. And so I want to highlight that. I think that as we look at working in partnership with RT, looking at TOD as a means to get more housing along our transit lines, it's good for air quality, it's good for mobility and moving people around. And as we continue to grow as a city, we're not going to hit the problems that Austin has, which the complaints I heard in everything we did were, we can't get anywhere because of traffic. So I, I think this is a big step forward on it, and I want to thank the city. I'd also, if we can, provide some direction to the city manager along with this item, which is really, and I know my staff is working with the mayor's staff and Councilmember Hanson's staff as well, and RT, to look at both short and long-term policies for the city around transit-oriented development. And I can provide some more detail on it. I don't need to go into it now, but I think that it's a timely piece as RT is doing much better on its own. We can move forward. I know that there are a number of folks in the business community who are very interested in the development community, who are willing to help us think through this. And so that would be my request, as to provide that direction along with the item.
Sure. Thank you very much, Councilmember. Councilmember Harris?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank you and the city manager for adopting a standing committee for water issues.
Yeah.
You know, it's probably our most precious commodity in this period of climate change. Assuring our water supply and safety and flood issues are going to be very, very big topics of conversation moving forward. So I'm looking forward to engaging on these issues.
Good. Thank you, and I thank you for taking the mantle of leadership. It is very important, and it's appropriate we have a standing committee. Glad you're chairing it. Councilman Gueda.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. On the same note, I want to thank our Parks Department staff for their work on Glenbrook Park, and I'm glad we're moving forward there on their, another big thumbs up. The park's been with a huge need for that parking area that's had a lot of dust and air quality impacts to the neighborhood. Also, again echoing the work that Councilmember Chenier has been working on this with item number 30, Stockton Boulevard is, has been an area that has had constant issues, particularly when you get further south in the highest number of the city where folks don't have a vehicle or other transportations. Whatever we can do to improve that, that community in the south area, but also fix some of those linkages that we have, such as Stockton and T Street in that corner area. Want to thank our public work staff, who came out last night, at night, to look at 14th Avenue and the challenges on 14th Avenue, and also our SAC Police Department, who were out there looking at the, the issues of pedestrian safety and right in areas where kids are trying to get home. With that, glad to support the consent calendar, and I'll move the item to Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. Thank you. Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to echo Councilmember Chenier's comments about the TOD proposal. And the only thing I would add to that, other than the grateful thanks of the public, is that we advanced something that I believe our mayor helped with in the legislature, which was switching from the LOS model to VMT.
Right. SB 743. Let me tell you, it's a long history.
What was it called again, Mayor? SB 743. But anyway, we're doing this with the central city-specific plan, and I think this TOD grant opportunity might be a way to carry it forward. We're going to look at it in the general plan update, but it's just another piece of that puzzle to getting TOD and infill development going.
Good. Thank you. Councilman Carr.
I'll be Councilmember Carr for the moment. I think for whatever reason, our microphones are, are, anyway, the sign that's going up in the Oak Park community is to recognize two men who have historically played a key role in Little League baseball for many, many years in the Oak Park community. And I just want to kind of call their names out right now. Mr. Blackwell, I don't know his full name, but I do know Mr. Crump, Mr., what's his name? Norm? Norman Blackwell, and Mr. Harrison Crump. And those have just been two mainstays in that community for many, many years. I don't know if either one of them is actively involved and engaged now, but they, the ability to have their name up will be something that the family will be proud of and something that we truly recognize, two men who have played a major role.
I just want to know, Mr. Crump's wife is still active. She comes to a lot of events. I just want to note that there is a sign there now. It just needs to be refreshed, and so that will be part of the grant that we do. And we will invite you all when we do an unveiling on it. Thank you. Councilman Warren.
Yep. I just wanted to, you know, and I, I think the acknowledgements and the ceremony and all that is, is very much warranted. And I just wanted to, to just mention that the, the Little League history in Sacramento is very rich. And the Crump family in Oak Park has a long history. And the Blackwell family, though, I am extremely familiar with. Some of you know, my father passed away when I was 14. Drunk driver hit him. But Norman Blackwell and my father were very good friends, and John Blackwell as well, who's Norman's brother. They used to umpire together. And, and to see him still alive and doing what he's doing right now, and helping young people and still involved, in fact, he's still playing super senior adult baseball in his 80s right now. He's traveling around the country, still playing baseball.
Chilling me.
Which is amazing. In fact, he was here at council probably six months ago. Or he was here within the last 12 months at our council.
What position does he play?
You know, let me tell you, he looked like he could still play shortstop. I don't know if he does or not.
Brandon Crawford had a bad year for the Giants, let me tell you.
Well, you know, there's some history. His son, who is another story, Orlando Blackwell, actually was drafted by the Giants, Norman, who was a little bit older than me. But there's a new book about baseball in the Sacramento region, and there are old pictures in there. And, and our old colleague Steve Cohn was going through the book, and he saw an Alan Warren in that book. And he brought it to me, said, this kind of looks like you, but it can't be you, because he was too old. This was a picture in the 70s. And it was a picture of my father on an All-Star team with Norm and John and a bunch of other Sacramento baseball people. And it's one of, just one of the pictures on an All-Star team in the book. But it really touched me to see that. And that picture, though, was credited by Norm. And so, I mean, this is very rich history, and I'm sure there are going to be a lot of people turning out for the event. So thank you guys for doing it.
It's great stuff. Thank you so much. Okay, we've got a motion, a second on the consent calendar. Ms. Kupiassis, that we actually call the rule one by one.
Thank you. Councilmember Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember Warren.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Guerra.
Aye.
Councilmember Chenier.
Aye.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Aye. All right, that passes nine to nothing. Now let's move to the action parts of our agenda. We begin with file item 33. Who's presenting on this land use item? Nick? Theocritis.
Theocritis. Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of the City Council. I am Nick Theocritis with the Department of Public Works. This item is a hearing on the request by Town Development to abandon a 25-foot public roadway easement within the Strawberry Field subdivision. Abandonment of the easement is necessary for the construction of 30 single-family units on lots created with a subdivision map. The tentative map was approved by the Planning Commission 2005, and the final map was recorded in 2006. This is the map of Strawberry Field subdivision. It has subdivided 145 lots, 30 of which back onto what's known as Airport Road. It's an existing roadway easement. And the easement's in conflict with the building pads for 20 of these lots that front on Firestar Way or have access to Firestar Way. For reference, this is the Strawberry Field subdivision. This is Arena Boulevard to the north, East Commerce Way on the west. To the south is Tanzanite Park and San Juan Road. This is the Airport Road easement alignment. And the Natomas Charter School is located right here, just northeast of the Strawberry Field subdivision. The abandonment of Airport Road with the subdivision is opposed by community groups, neighborhood associations, and bicycle advocates, because it would preclude the development of a continuous off-street bike, bike route between Natomas Charter School and Tanzanite Park. In 2005, when Town Development obtained approval for the special permit to construct the 145 units, one of the project conditions was to obtain approval for the abandements needed for the development, including abandonment of the 25-foot road easement, which conflicts with the development of the 30 lots. While the 2004 bikeway master plan, which was the existing plan at the time, showed an off-street bikeway along Airport Road within the subdivision, in reviewing the proposed entitlements, staff felt, or did not feel, that an off-street bike trail was necessary, and recommended that the subdivision be approved with a parallel, on-street Class 3 route along Firestar Way instead. And this exhibit shows Firestar Way, it's shown in blue, and the route, the Class 3 route that was conditioned, and it connects to the existing Class 3 route, which fronts the Natomas Charter School. The Planning Commission heard public testimony on the matter, and after discussion, approved the tentative map with the condition that the on-street bike route be provided instead of the off-street bike path. The 2010 bikeway master plan was subsequently amended in 2011 to delete the off-street alignment. However, the 2016 bikeway master plan reinserted the off-street alignment along Airport Road, and the 2016 plan includes both alignments. It appears that the reinsertion was an error when mapping information was transferred from the 2010 plan to the 2016 plan. The city has since approved the roadway improvements for Strawberry Field, and have been constructed with the on-street route along Firestar. However, the Airport Road easement has not been removed through the map process, and it remains a public roadway easement. Town Development is requesting that the City Council approve the vacation of the easement so that it can proceed with the sale and development of the subdivided lots. Town Development has obtained the necessary clearance letters from all reviewing city departments. Since the approval of the project entitlements in 2005, the city's transportation policies have changed significantly to promote alternative transportation choices by eliminating gaps in the pedestrian bikeway networks and by improving safety. So if this development project were to be conditioned now, staff's recommendation would be to retain the easement and require the development to include the off-street path along Airport Road. However, while staff would recommend that the easement be retained if the project were to be conditioned today, given the previous approval actions of the project by the Planning Commission and the City Council, and the cost of the roadway and utility infrastructure, which is now in place, staff recommends that the City Council approve the abandonment of Airport Road and approve the amendment to the 2016 bikeway master plan to delete the off-street route. Mayor, this concludes my presentation. Representatives of Town Development, as well as members of the public, are here to speak tonight, and staff is available to answer questions.
Thank you very much. Nick, so Councilmember Ashby, now this is your district. We have the applicant, we have public testimony. Do you want to hear from the applicant first? Why don't we do that, so that sort of the issues are framed, and then why don't we hear from the public as well, and then we'll turn it over to the council for deliberation?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Bill Abbott. Pursuant to your ordinance, I'm disclosing I'm a registered lobbyist here in the city of Sacramento. I'm here on behalf of Town Development of Sacramento. We have previously provided the council and staff our research that went through the history of this project. So in that context, we don't have new information to add. So I just want to actually dwell on four points. Obviously, we concur in the staff recommendation at the outset. My first point is, we're not here tonight to design the subdivision. With me is Jeff Pemstein, who was the project manager when the, all the planning took place in this project. He can speak with direct experience as to what happened. But in 2005, the city debated whether to have the bikeway at the rear of the subdivision -- that up for a second? Located at the rear or in the street. And it was a very public process. It was debated openly. There were community meetings. And the city made a conscious decision and had my client design the project with a Class 3 in the front. So this is not something that happened unilaterally by the developer. This is not something that the developer snuck by the city. As, as Jeff can explain, it was a very transparent process. And so we're not dealing with a blank canvas. If we were coming in with a piece of, as staff pointed out, if this was a brand-new project, the city would, would apply new policies. But this is not a brand-new project. It was approved in 2005, 2006. We have a development agreement, which is drafted by your city attorney's office, and that development agreement essentially locks in the applicable standards for the life of the development agreement. So to the extent we're talking about new policies that come along, I would ask you just to keep in mind the fact that there's a development agreement in place, which, which was purposely designed to vest the developer's ability to, to build under the 2005, 2006 Consistently, when you go through the record, and I do mean consistently, and I've asked staff several times, I said, do you have evidence that contradicts the report I, the analysis I did back in, in April? Consistently, when the tentative map, actually, let me back up. Before my client bought the property, came before the City Council, and there was a discussion by which staff advised the council that the bikeway would be relocated from the back of the project to an on-street. So when my client designed the subdivision map, they designed it consistent with the prior discussion. That, and the staff reports to the Planning Commission, note, the bikeway's not going at the back of the project, the bikeway's going at the front of the project. Now, the tentative map, I don't believe, came to the City Council, but the development standards did. The development standards approved by the City Council, and it's not, you are a continuous body, it's not a different city council, it is the same city council. This city council approved special development standards by ordinance that allow my client to construct the rear of the building within 10 feet of the edge of the property. There was no discussion about, oh, by the way, we may change our mind. There was no indication that there was, it was a bad idea. There was no indication that the abandonment would not take place. It was, it's absolutely incompatible for the council to approve an, an allowance to build within 10 feet of the rear line within a 25-foot setback unless the council intended to abandon it. So there is a consistent history of support, express support for the notion that this bikeway, the Class 3, would be built in, at the front of the project, and the city would relinquish its interest in the rear. As I briefly mentioned, and Jeff can address in more detail, the issue of the bikeway was addressed in public forums. One of the reasons it was pushed, was relocated, was that the neigh, the existing neighbors located to the east said, we don't want a bikeway behind our back fences. So this wasn't, this, there was community engagement on this. And the community, the Natomas Community Association, as reflected in the materials we've already submitted, said, we want it on the, we want it in the back. But notwithstanding the input from the community association, the city made the decision to do the Class 3 and support the abandonment. to do the Class III and support the abandonment. There's a question that has come up as to whether or not, well, what was the detrimental reliance of the developer? Right? Did they reasonably rely upon a tentative map? Did they reasonably rely upon improvement standards that allow them to build absolutely inconsistent with the abandonment? Did they unreasonably rely upon a recorded final map? And did they unreasonably rely upon a development agreement which vested all those entitlements to their benefit? Well, you can look to the fact that this site was extensively contaminated. It was the former airport, the Natomas Airport. My client spent approximately $11 million to take an existing hazardous condition and clean it up to state standards. I have a summary of that report, I've got multiple copies, I'll provide those to the clerk. But there was a substantial expenditure that frankly, who would invest $11 million if there was a remote possibility that a later City Council would say, "No, we want you to redesign the subdivision. You can't build what we've granted you in terms of zoning. You cannot build what's been approved in terms of a final map." So my client relied upon a reasonable expectation, again, a reasonable expectation because there was no negative communication that I can find anywhere in city records that ever suggested that the later abandonment would not be a good idea.
Well, I mean, I'd like to ask the applicant some questions. Do you want to?[704.12][704.12](inaudible) Okay, that's fine. I'll save my questions, but I want to reserve some time.
So those are, I think, in terms of points that are not reflected in the staff report that we wanted to bring to the council's attention. I think there's one broader policy question for your consideration. It's not immediate concern for my client, but the language that's in this development agreement is, I suspect, is identical language to what the city uses elsewhere in the Natomas development agreements and probably in any development agreement within the city. And realistically, a major development project, it's frequent for a major development project, for the developer to have to come in six months later, a year later, or two years later, or three years later, and ask for some sort of discretionary approval. Maybe a lot-line adjustment, maybe a variance, maybe an encroachment permit, and maybe design approval. And I think the issue for your consideration is, or the question that will be in the community is, what's the confidence level that a developer should have when it has a final map, custom development standards, and a development agreement, and it has to come back to the city in six months or a year and seek a permit which is fully consistent with the entire administrative record? Should they be at risk? And to the extent that they are at risk, I think developers have to ask themselves the question about whether or not this is a regulatory environment that facilitates major investment decisions. It's a broader policy question than just the specific issues we have with our project, but I understand if you exercise a discretion that, in an adverse manner here, that means you, as to every developer, the council can say no on any later discretionary permit. That's the precedent that gets set, potentially by tonight's decision. So I would just ask you to weigh that. We have two speakers. Jeff Pemstein, who can talk about the history of the project. And if I can just add, staff has been very professional and responsive to our information requests in the meetings. I'd like to thank them for that. As of yesterday, I checked again with Mr. Theocritis. I said, "Is there something in the files that talks about the final map? Why the abandonment wasn't reflected on the final map when it came forward?" And he can speak for himself, but my interpretation was, no, there are no records that explain what happened. Well, our second speaker is the engineer whose firm processed that map, and he has had the chance to go back and look at the documents, and what he will tell you is, when they submitted the final map to the city for approval, and it goes through plan check, when they submitted that map, the abandonment was on the map and staff told them to take it off the final map. So if you ask the question, "Why wasn't this done when the final map was processed?", the answer is, upon staff recommendation. My client did file, this was 2006, in January 2007, they did file a complete application for an abandonment. So they haven't sat still for 10 years waiting to process this request. The application never, it seemed to advance to the City Council, but it never got processed, and no one, and the staff report doesn't have an explanation for that, and I don't think anybody does either, not that we've been able to determine. So just bear in mind that, to the extent that my client was obligated to process an abandonment, they did. The city, it became then in the control of the City Council as to whether or not to agendize this in 2007, and it never happened. So that's why we are here today. So thank you. I've got two other speakers briefly.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, briefly, I don't think we, if we're going to go through more history, I don't want to repeat what Mr. Abbott just said, so you're welcome to come on up and add anything that he did not, that he did not cover, okay? But we, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Jeff Pemstein, Division President for Town Development. I will do my level best not to repeat anything. This is a little like Groundhog Day. I was at this City Council dais in 2005 when we were pleased to get this project approved after over 14 community meetings, after substantial input, substantial work with city staff. And the best way I can frame this, and I guess my input to you all, is that this is a legacy project. And legacy projects, sometimes we forget the history and the due process, but we went through our due process with the city, and it was a very comprehensive due process. And as a result, if not for a flood moratorium, if not for the worst recession in modern history, this project would have built out long ago, and we would not be standing here taking up your precious time this evening. We believe the record is clear. We humbly, humbly request your support to abandon this easement. Our company has made a substantial investment, and through this moratorium, we've been good neighbors, we've taken care of our property, we've made sure that there's no vandalism out there. And to Bill Abbott's point, we also spent a substantial amount of money cleaning up a brownfield site. Our money, not the city's money. That's a benefit to the city, that's a benefit to the community. So we ask your support, and I'm here to answer any other questions. Let me bring our engineer up just to add a little piece of technical.
Good, thank you.
Good evening. My name's Kent Baker with Baker Williams Engineering Group, and our firm did the engineering on the project and processed the map. And Friday morning, I got an email requesting me, "Do you have any other history or records on it?" So I went through the three boxes of files in my office this weekend. I found a copy of an old map check that was redlined by the city. I have that copy, and the original map that was submitted for map check did have the standard "merge all the parcels and abandon of the roads" not shown on it. But that note was removed before the map was recorded. And I'm not the one who processed the map in our office, but I'm pretty sure the request came from the city because then we immediately started the process of the abandonment. And the reason, the map recorded late part of 2006, we got the abandonment submitted in January of 2007. It takes a long, the request is a little bit different when you do abandonment instead of on the map with a separate abandonment like this. You have to get all the clearance letters from the different utility companies, and you go one by one to get these letters, and it takes months to get them, getting from PG&Es, MUD, and everybody else. And so we did submit the application in 2007. They asked for the final legal descriptions for it to go to City Council in June of 2007, and that's where it went into a hole that I don't, I have no explanation for. But it was sent up to be scheduled, it never got scheduled in 2007.
Thank you. A law school final exam here, property, it's complex. Okay. We do have two members of the public who want to testify. I don't want to hear from members of the public, then we'll turn it over to the council for questions.
Okay, the first speaker is Becky Hyek, and then Jim Brown.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Becky Hyek. I'm the Executive Director of the North Natomas Transportation Management Association. The North Natomas TMA has worked with Councilmember Ashby and city staff for the past several years on over 40 bicycle infrastructure projects, finishing paths, getting curb cuts, crosswalks painted, lights and pedestrian signals installed. A lot of good work has been accomplished in a three-way partnership, and we'd like to continue in this fashion. Abandoning this easement for the construction of Strawberry Field subdivision and mending the bicycle master plan is the wrong thing to do. It's going backward in our work toward connecting neighborhoods and people. On the positive front, the North Natomas TMA has bike and walk-to-school programs in all eight elementary schools in North Natomas. In fact, 20% of our kids walk to school on a weekly basis. Star Academy opened last school year and is just to the north. Once the easement becomes a bike path, it'll connect kids who live on the south to school and provide a safer and more convenient way to get there. We know good connectivity infrastructure helps give parents the encouragement and confidence needed to allow their children to walk. Losing this off-street corridor would be disappointing unless in our ability to help Star Academy achieve both our goals, keeping children actively walking and biking to school. Gaps in infrastructure are discouraging. They are disincentives for pedestrians and cyclists. Should we lose this easement to development, the gap is large. To the south, the long-term plan is to construct a Class 1 bike path along Airport Road. It's in the bicycle master plan. Once the arena side is redeveloped, potentially a major destination for employment in the north, this corridor will bring cyclists and pedestrians up the middle of North Natomas. It will be the only off-street interior path in the area. This corridor would bring users to Tanzanite Park on the south to soccer games, a skateboard park, and more. Another park is planned on the west side of Airport, within Airport Road, within future housing. This path is, will be, the only off-street interior path in that area. My last reason is because of-
Thank you, it's two minutes here. Please conclude if you would, please. Thank you.
Lastly, my compliments to city staff in the hiring of Jennifer Donlin Wyatt, the city's Active Transportation Program Specialist, and also for giving her new staff. This shows residents that city leadership is becoming serious about their commitment to bicycling.
I need you to wrap it up. Thank you so much. Two minutes, thank you.
Last speaker is Jim Brown.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I'm Jim Brown with Sacramento Area Bicycle Advocates. SABA advocates for the benefits of enabling more people of all ages and abilities to travel by bike for all reasons. This easement would provide for a place for families, children, and seniors to walk and ride bikes without the hazards of mixing with neighborhood traffic, and this is especially important in a part of the city that is so heavily defined by cars and driving. As Becky pointed out, this would be the only trail of its kind up the center of Natomas. The city's bicycle master plan calls for developing more routes that are separated from cars and traffic. This easement is exactly what the city's plan says we need to do more of. The decision to vacate the easement was a bad idea when the council and commission made it back in 2005 and 2006, and it's still a bad idea. With all due respect to city staff, we urge the council to reject the staff recommendation and vote no on this item. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, let's here, turn it over to members of the City Council. We'll begin with the district member for this item, Councilmember Ashby.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to pass this down. There's one for each council member and the city manager. This is a stack of letters that I'll explain in just a moment. My first comment is this: I would like to make a motion to reject staff's recommendation and instead retain the easement providing for the bike path, thus denying the request to abandon the path. And here's why. Being handed out to you now is a stack of letters. I appreciate North Natomas TMA and SABA for coming here tonight, but they are not the only people who have spoken up. I know some of you have received letters. Included in this packet in front of you are letters from SABA, but a letter from Natomas Charter School, which represents several hundred families. That is at one end of this path. There is a letter from the HOA president of the Natomas Crossing Neighborhood Association, which is the homes that you could see in the picture, and 400 homes, the entire 400 homes in that region. The North Natomas TMA, which advocates for all 60,000 people in North Natomas. The North Natomas Community Coalition, which is nearly every homeowners' association in my district, thousands of, representing thousands of homes. You have a letter from Walk Sacramento and over a dozen individuals. You also have all received letters, and these are both important, very important. One from former Mayor Heather Fargo, who sat on this dais as some of these decisions were made, and one from former Natomas Unified School District trustee, Ron Dwyer-Voss, who was the school board president when some of these decisions were being made. I have met with Mayor Fargo to talk to her about the previous decisions that were made around this path. She is adamant that it was never the intention of this council or the mayor to abandon that path. She spoke with former council member Ray Trethaway and asked him the same question. He too is adamant that it was never the intention of him or this council to abandon that path. Between the three of us, that is over three decades of representation of this swath of land, council members and mayor, we all agree, and have conveyed to you hopefully, that we expect to maintain this path, have it built, and that this is really fundamentally a public safety issue. The issue here, and Brandon, I'm going to ask you to put up the overhead map, please. The issue here is about how folks get to school. The red line that you can see is, shows you the bike path that people will take both from the north and from the south. That empty field on the map there, let's just tell you how new Natomas Charter School is, is actually Natomas Charter School there to the, yeah, where Brandon is pointing. So that is where over 500 kids go to school. This pathway connects the north and the south to that path. Should we take staff's recommendation today, what will happen is, where that red line goes along the back of those properties, it will instead go along the street. Instead of students interfering, interfacing with zero cars, they will encounter five driveways. Each of those five driveways has six homes. That's 30 homes. These homes are around 1,500,000 square feet, projected to have two drivers in each home at least. That is a minimum of 60 vehicles that they would encounter versus zero vehicles if we maintain the abandoned path. That is why this is a public safety issue. The current design for this section does not include a homeowners' association. That prevents people from parking along the street. I have a lot of these types of designs in my district, and they tend to have a lot of people that live in the home because the home is so big, but since the driveway is shared with so many other units, the street is full of cars. That means any painted bike lane would be covered with cars, so students would have to decide whether to use the sidewalk and the driveways, or the street behind the cars and the driveways, neither one of which is a good, safe option, particularly in comparison to having zero encounters, which is what would happen if we use our discretion and keep the path as it is planned out right now. The issue here, and the really important part, because you've been taken through a long history that goes back to 2005 and comes up through '07 and all of that, is that this particular decision about whether or not to abandon this path is at council's discretion. It is at our discretion. One consistency constantly that these developers have heard at every juncture is that they have to get council approval, council discretion, in order to move forward. We had Transportation Department put together, help us with a timeline, and in that timeline, it is very consistent that while staff may have had recommendations, those recommendations would have just come to this council, and this council could have decided yes or no. And the staff has had varying opinions along the way, but they were always told that they would need to apply and obtain approval of all abandonments required for the development of the area covered by any- of the area covered by any tentative map. And then, as you have heard them tell you themselves in the map that they submitted, they did not include the abandonment. So there has been some confusion. I think staff has done the best they can. However, lots of staff has changed since 2005 and now, and maybe something different would have happened if there wouldn't been a moratorium or if this had come earlier, but none of those things occurred. Instead, the decision is being made now. There is nothing that has happened up to this point that changes the fact that this decision is made at our discretion. It is up to this council. Staff has made a recommendation. I am asking you to reject that recommendation and instead listen to myself, the former representatives of this area, and the community members to which thousands are represented in the letters that you have in front of you. Also, Brandon, would you put up that yellow sheet, the citywide Vision Zero? Consistently, we as a city, including using our own City of Sacramento Twitter and Facebook and social media feeds, over the last year or so, have talked about Vision Zero and how important it is to keep bicyclists and pedestrians separate from cars. It is literally our goal. Our goal is to have zero conflicts between pedestrians and bikers with cars. And tonight, you get to decide, and it is completely up to us, our discretion. Do we take the five hundred kids that go to Natomas Charter School and put them in front of five driveways with thirty homes, two cars each, sixty drivers, or do we give them a safe, direct path to school? These are some of the documents -- there's another one, Brandon, would you put it up there -- that have been tweeted out in the last few weeks from the city, talking about our citywide goals. We're focused on downtown right now, but I would argue that any one of us that has projects like this coming in our district have the opportunity to use our discretion as a council to protect pedestrians and bikers, and especially in this instance, we are talking about children. Brandon, would you put up the El Centro improvements? One of the reasons why you received letters from dozens of community members on this issue is because this is not a new issue for Natomas. Natomas is a growing community. There are a lot of areas where bike paths are not finished yet, and here's what can happen. This is El Centro Road. Last month, tragically, a young teenager that goes to Interchem was riding on this road and was killed by a hit-and-run driver. As a result, Supervisor Serna and I worked together with the city transportation and the county transportation as expeditiously as we possibly could to create a safer route for kids to bike on this road. The decision in front of us is exactly the same, only it is preventative. Why would we wait until a child dies to go back and try to make something safer? The decision is in front of us now, and we have an opportunity to respond to a community that is sensitive to having just lost a young person because we didn't have the infrastructure in place that we could have and should have had. Lastly, on this item, I want to take you on a virtual bike ride. Brandon, this'll be pretty quick, but this'll give you an idea of what it looks like. If we were to start -- go ahead. Oh, Mindy, she's waiting on you. Brandon is gonna take us on a virtual bike ride up Airport Road. Airport Road, as Becky told you, is sort of an old road that had existed a long time ago. It's not used very much by cars, and it is a future bike lane dedicated for biking. So all of the neighboring pieces of property here, and this is really important for consistency purposes, every one of the neighboring properties along the line that has come and asked to abandon the same path has been sent away. There is not an abandonment along this area that has been granted to another developer. So consistently, this council, although none of us were on it, has tried very hard to direct everything towards Airport Road becoming the path. Brandon, can you zoom in for us down onto Airport Road? Take us over by Tanzanite and drive us up Airport Road, please. Okay, we're on Airport Road. Many people use this. I know Mr. Howard Chan uses it often. This is the way people from North Natomas -- go ahead, Brandon, drive forward. This is the way people from North Natomas and South Natomas get back and forth. They go up Old Airport Road, and they keep moving. At the end here, where we're headed up, is where the property line -- can't drive across it, but -- is where the property line goes for the community. Right here is where it will empty, right? So they're either gonna empty on the road behind the sixty cars, or they're gonna empty right here, and then, Brandon, let's see where they go. Right across the street to where the school district has built an extra-wide sidewalk. This is obviously a little bit older because Google Maps, that school's actually done, but there are zero, you will see zero driveways for the kids to cross. None. There are no interferences, zero vehicles. The only thing they would have to do is cross that street. And then, if you keep going, if you are Howard Chan or me and you're riding home, as soon as you cross the street from the school, you again pick up a dedicated bike path right there, off-street. This is a continuance of the exact same thing. Brandon, you can leave it there. So I am asking my colleagues to please support my motion to reject staff's recommendation, protect the children and families in my district, and continue forward with what we have already started here, which is a dedicated off-street bike lane for the purposes of public safety and separating cars from pedestrians and bicyclists. Thanks, Brandon. You can just leave that there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ashby. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I have several questions. First, I'd like to say, Councilmember Ashby, you make a strong case, and of course, I think that all of us understand the importance of dedicated bikeways, protected bike paths, and I think we would always opt for those, given the choice. There are, however, a couple of outstanding conditions here that are still very vague, and I'd like to get a little clarity, so Mr. Theocridis could ask you a question or two, and also the developer, perhaps Mr. Abbott or others in your crew there, would After the development agreement was accepted, if you will, was put forth by the Planning and Design Commission, at what point did the developers start making improvements to the property, specifically underground improvements on those six-pack areas that would be adjacent to Airport Road? What year would that have been?
Hold on. Get your mic. All right. It would have been on around 2006, I believe, they started grading, and this is going off the aerial chronology off Google Maps, and about 2007 is when they actually appeared to have built the infrastructure improvements, Broadway.
Okay. So that roughly coincided with their application for an abandonment that was a discretionary decision that would come to council?
It was around that time, and it coincided with the final map as well, which was recorded in 2006.
So did it ever make it to the agenda of council? As I understand it, it did make it to the agenda of council, and that it was pulled. And in fact, that happened twice. Is that accurate?
That is accurate, and the reason is that there were two other applications for abandonment, one for Natomas Field to the north, and one for Natomas Crossing to the south. When those applications came forward, the council considered them. They took public testimony. The public testimony was in opposition to the abandonment, and I believe Councilmember Trethewey asked the applicants to go back and work out some solutions. One of the applications was continued and then dropped, and I believe the second application was withdrawn. So in that period of time, I believe it was between January 2007 to June 2007, we had an application in from Town Homes, of Town Development, but we didn't move it forward, understanding that the council had asked the issues associated with the other two applications to get resolved.
So are you saying the application was withdrawn by Town Homes or by the city?
Staff did not bring it forward because we were looking for a solution to the issues that were raised.
And so you never reached a solution?
We never reached a solution, and then, with the downturn in the economy, the moratorium, this project did not move forward, and it's come forward recently.
So my question then to Mr. Abbott or people working with Town Homes is, why did you start the improvements before you got a vacation of the easement? It doesn't make sense to me that you would invest that amount of money in the property at that point, knowing that there was still a discretionary decision to be made.
Jeff Pemstein, Division President with Town Development of Sacramento. You ask a great question. It would seem foolish and insane for us to go forward without having those clearances. I'll refer--
May I just interject, especially considering that other vacations had been contested successfully?
Yeah, and I'm not a big revisionist of history guy, but I recall many different things going on at that time. None of them had to do with our property. I would refer to the council to the February 10, 2005 Planning Commission staff report, which clearly states that that easement was to be abandoned. It said it was being removed from our property, and it was a key component to the approval that we were given to build our property. Before we started our site improvements, we spent three and a half million dollars just cleaning the property up. So before we could even get to that stage, we -- to do site improvements, we had to clean the property up. The abandonment of the easement was never a question, and I had that with direct conversations with Councilmember Trethewey and with Mayor Fargo at the time in the course of doing business with the city. So we went forward, never thinking it was an issue.
Well, I'm still having a little problem with that. If it was never an issue, why did you then apply for an abandonment?
Because we wanted to clean up all of the actions that needed -- you know, it's like checking off every box when you do a final map, and so we were assured that it was not an easement. The city was the one who authorized the recordation of our final map. We don't -- so we don't make this stuff up, and we -- you know what? And when we went through the community process at that time, we could have very easily moved our subdivision over. You can't do that now. It's a huge impediment to our project. So we went forward in good faith, working with the city staff at the time, most of whom are gone now, working with the elected officials, most of whom are gone now. Heck, I'm the only one really still around, with the exception of Stacia Cosgrove, because I know she was our planner at the time, so.
Did you complete the improvements, including the roadways and driveways, prior to applying for the vacation?
We completed them concurrent with that, and so that was a last piece that we were asked to -- that we thought we had to do by virtue of our conditions of approval. And so we were allowed to go forward as an accommodation to the city council member who was negotiating with the property owner to the north at the time.
And then, how much money do you stand to lose? I mean, how much money was invested in those improvements?
Well, you know, we're--
Prior to the application for the vacation?
I mean, we're eleven million dollars just with cleanup and site improvements.
But I mean, on those particular five driveways and the underground, to the homes that would be affected by vacation or the lack of vacation of the easement, you know, I'm just trying to get a sense of what the real dollars are. And then, another question is, are you going to develop those homes, or are you gonna sell the project?
So we are in the -- oh, those are both very good questions, so let me do my best answer then. First, we are in contract to sell the entire property. We've sold the first half of the property to Signature Homes. We are a home builder. We've chosen not to build this project, and so we brought in a high-quality home builder to build them. They've taken down the first phase. This is in the second phase. If this abandonment does not occur, then we will be in -- probably in breach of our purchase and sale agreement with Signature Homes.
I assume there's a remedy for that, but money will be lost.
Correct.
But you can't put a dollar amount on that.
Well, in terms of the -- you know, there's a value for it. It's in excess of a million dollars.
Okay. Fair enough. Well, this is a tough one, because I think there's very strong arguments on both sides of this issue. Bill, did you want to say something?
Councilman Harris, if I may. Bear in mind that through 2005, 2006, to our knowledge, the applicant never received any negative signals or suggestions from the city that the abandonment would not take place. Remember, the city council approved -- it makes no sense for the city council to approve an allowance, allowing them to build within ten feet of the rear yard, effectively fifteen feet into a 25-foot setback. It doesn't make any sense. And I would just add, in the development agreement, the language reads as follows: "The city and landowner agree that each of them shall at all times act in good faith in order to carry out the terms of this agreement." And that includes the special development standards imposed by the city council. So I think the legal debate is whether or not a -- I think that the affirmation of the staff recommendation is consistent with good faith under the development agreement. I think in light of all these facts, the long history, the lack of adverse negative signals, pushback, whatever, from anybody in the city, as best as we can tell, is not consistent with good faith. To now refuse to--
I want to move on. I think we got it. You got --
Just one more question.
One more question.
So why did you not follow the process through to the abandonment? Obviously, if you applied, you figured it was important. I don't understand the discrepancy here, why staff dropped the ball, and it seems like staff dropped the ball in a big way, but why did you, as a developer, not pursue it? If it got pulled from the agenda twice, why did you just back off when it was pulled the second time and it just sort of vaporized? I don't quite cut--
Yeah, and again, you know, this is the mystery of legacy projects, and so what I would submit to is that we never pulled the application out. We went forward with it. I think staff, in an abundance of caution, did not move the application forward for reasons not connected to our property. And so we were allowed to record our final map, under the reliance of the approvals that we had. Is that a foolish mistake? One could argue that, but one would also argue that, as I said before, if it were not for the moratorium and the recession, this would have been handled years ago, and this project would have been built. And so now, we stand in front of you, asking you to stand behind those approvals that the former city council and planning commission made on our behalf.
Okay. I want to move on. If the members have questions, we want to move through this. Thank you. Councilmember Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Councilman Harris stated, I mean, this is a really -- this is a dilemma. I mean, it's a problem, because typically, when you have a final map, that would memorialize all the conditions for the project to go forward, and I think, unless I'm not hearing this correctly, the final map was ambiguous as it relates to this abandonment. Is that the case?
I don't believe it was ambiguous. Typically, when the abandonment's effectuated with a final map, there's an explicit note that says, that describes or points to the easement and states that this easement is to be abandoned, and that note was not on the final map.
So the map was final, and it had this easement illustrated on the final map? That's correct?
That's correct.
And there were no notes to suggest anything other than that, is what you're saying?
There was not a note that explicitly stated that the easement shown on the map was to be abandoned.
All right. So then, what were the considerations then for city staff to recommend approval of the abandonment? I mean, what were some of the major considerations that you came to to recommend abandoning the--
Well, had the abandonment been stated on the map, it would have been approved, and it would have recorded, and then the abandonment would have been effectuated. The fact that it wasn't meant that the second avenue was to come forward to the council with an application and have that decision made at this -- with this body. And again, because two other applications were moving around the same time, council had concerns that were raised by the public and sent those applications back. We didn't feel that it was -- that there was a solution for this project, and we didn't move it forward. In fact, we have some correspondence to that effect that Mr. Adams can speak to.
Yeah, Thomas Adams, Department of Public Works. Yeah, as of June 13, 2007, I had correspondence with one of the staff, with Baker Williams, the engineer, that submitted the standalone application after the final map recorded, and that letting him know that both in Natomas Field and in Natomas Crossing, the abandonment along Airport Road-- along Airport Road were continued or pulled from council. And that the mayor, in her statement with that, wanted to see possibilities for off-street as well as on-street scenario of the bike trail between Arena Boulevard and Tanzanite Avenue and that area. And also that it was stated that we were working with city council for this area, that we can make some kind of adjustments or work with the council on some different scenarios for the Strawberry Field. Because at that point, the Strawberry Field abandonment was scheduled to go to council July 17th. Because of those comments on the two previous applications at council, we didn't proceed to pursue this one, because it all had to do with Airport Road, abandonment along Airport Road.
I think, though, my question was really the considerations, though, for your recommendation. And as Councilwoman Ashby stated, she stated that there were safety concerns, you know, traffic concerns. And I know when you, before you make a recommendation, you do all of these analysis to determine, you know, what proper mitigations are going to be for, you know, the impacts. And so, at least the way I understand it, the applicant wants this easement abandoned. You guys are recommending that the council accept your recommendation and abandon these easements. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and then now you've got Councilwoman Ashby on the other side of that, saying that it is a safety concern, and different people in the community are concerned. And it really puts this council in a tough position, because, you know, I mean, it puts us in a tough position, but it really puts the developer in an extremely tough position, because, you know, final map, they've spent a bunch of money on improvements. And, you know, unfortunately, this is not the first project that I'm aware of that has had challenges, internal challenges with the city, as it relates to prior approvals, and then some things, you know, and I'm not pointing fingers, because we had a tremendous economic impact. We had downsizing, a lot of moving parts, we got a lot of legacy projects. But it would seem to me that this should not be a win-lose scenario. And I think I understand what you're saying, is you're trying to make it right by the developer, because I do believe that the city staff feels that there's some responsibility on the city staff's part. That's my own assessment from where I sit, knowing, I've sat out there where they have sat, and now, you know, I'm here in this seat. And I understand Councilwoman Ashby's concern, because, you know, she's seeing kids and families riding their bikes, and this appears to be a much safer route. And so I don't know if there's really been any analysis or enough analysis done, comparing and contrasting the two routes, to find out really if they are indeed what Councilwoman Ashby wants, is a safer route, you know? I'm not sure if it's more isolated, you know, where I think Councilwoman Ashby wants this bike, and, you know, maybe there's some things that have not been analyzed. And so, you know, my general feeling is that I would, you know, I would be supportive of the developer in this particular case, because, you know, it takes an awful lot to get to a final map, from an untitled piece of ground to the tentative map, final map, posting bonds, doing all the improvements, and then we also have the staff's recommendation. But then I have a very passionate person who sits beside me, who I know cares an awful lot about her community, and it just appears to me that there should be some other, some other analysis or decision that we can come to, as opposed to having a winner and a loser tonight. And so, and I'm willing to try to help explore it, if, you know, if it makes any difference to Councilwoman Ashby, but those are my comments, and so I'm going to yield to the rest of...
There is a motion on the floor. Councilmember Chenier, and then I'm going to step in and ask my questions, before we go back to Councilmember Ashby, because I was waiting, but we'll go with the other members first. Councilmember Chenier, and Hanson, and I'm going to ask some questions. Go ahead.
Thanks. So I actually want to thank Councilmember Warren, and I was going to go up a little earlier, I wanted to hear from the head of a developer, what you're thinking. I mean, this is a really tough question, and it's really a large question for who we are as a city. I think it's much more, and I want to respect Councilmember Ashby, this is her district, but I also think that this is a question of how we work with developers and the business climate that we have. Kind of, are we changing the rules along the way? So, Nick, I want to come back to you kind of one more time, and you've answered this question, but I just want to ask it again. To your way of thinking, is there any, are there reasons that the developer would think that he would not, or they would not get this abandonment at some point? Is this a reasonable expectation for the work that they're doing moving forward? And I understand that the recession just took a chunk out of a lot of the work that we were doing, a lot of work that they were doing, and things might have gotten kind of pushed to the side at that point.
Now, that's an excellent question. During the planning commission's consideration of the tentative map and the conditions, there were folks from the community, the Natomas Community Association in particular, that spoke on this issue, and requested that the map not be approved in its configuration, and to preserve Airport Road as an off-street bike path, and to construct a frontage road and have the homes fronting the off-street bike path. At the time, and Councilmember Warren asked the question as well, you know, why was the staff recommendation at the time to abandon Airport Road and construct a Class III on Firestar Way? The answer to that question is, at the time, you know, the policy's changed significantly, as I stated in my presentation. We have Vision Zero goal, which is to reduce, to bring fatal accidents and injuries, serious injuries, to zero by 2027. That mindset was not at the time. And staff's opinion was that there are many schools in the city that don't have a direct Class I bike path to it. There are many schools that just have Class III facilities, don't even have Class II striped bike lanes facilities. So at the time, that was a staff recommendation. Again, today, it would be different. The question is, how, you know, is there a big difference here in terms of public convenience and safety? And I think that's subjective. I think it's correct to say that the Class I facility is preferred, the off-street bike path is clearly preferred. At the time, though, that wasn't the staff recommendation. So I hope that answers your question.
Let me ask a question, and I don't know if this is a closed-session item, because there's potential litigation here, but Mr. Rujak, can you help us with any of this, kind of along the way? What's our liability?
Well, I'll give you the highest level. As Councilmember Ashby has already correctly indicated, the decision before you tonight is a discretionary decision. The decision whether or not to vacate a public easement, public right-of-way, is a discretionary decision of this council vested in your legislative prerogative. So you've taken the information in and make your decision as you see fit, understanding the potential consequences of that decision. But I can answer more specific questions if you want.
Thank you for that definitive answer. It's much appreciated. Let me ask maybe one more question, and this is of the council member, and I think this got pulled a couple of times, so I assume there have been discussions. Are there any other options that you see going forward? I actually went up and looked at the space. It's about 500 feet, right? Is that correct, the whole bike lane? So we're talking about a block, more or less. I understand the driveways and the number of driveways there. I actually asked Mr. Barone about, like, a buffered bike lane and what that might work, not an optimal solution. I don't know if that's something that, which is about 10 grand, I guess $5,000 to $10,000 to do that. Is that a potential? Are there other things that we could look at along the way? I'm trying to echo a little bit of Mr. Warren here, of is there a way we can make this not a win-lose situation? And I would ask, because I know you've been working on it.
May I for you to answer, Mayor?
Yeah, please.
So first of all, you know, I work with a lot of developers on a lot of development projects, because I have a new growth area. And I have tremendous regard for the group in front of you. We've gotten along just fine. They've brought other issues forward to me and asked me for help and changes, and they haven't, we haven't had any problems. They are working with a buyer, so the mayor met with the buyer, I met with the buyer, they brought him to me. I do not think that there is another route. The mayor tried for other routes, I tried for other routes, there was, there was no opportunity to do anything else. A guided, guarded bike lane would not help in this instance, because you would still have five driveways with 30 homes and 60 cars that are backing in and out. So to be just brief and succinct and to the point, I think we have exhausted all potential opportunities. I believe Mr. Tretheway and Mayor Fargo both tried the exact same thing, as did Mayor Steinberg, as did I, and we have landed back in this place. And as Mr. Rujak has told you, it is just time for discretionary action of this council.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on. Thank you, Councilman Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, everyone who's put a lot of time and effort into 500 feet and a lot of, I think, issues that cross the city. I just want to say a couple of things. I think this is a really tough issue, because it strikes to our integrity, but on two different fronts. And many of the people sitting here sat through the meeting earlier tonight, as people feel that we really don't care about the public, and despite how many hours we spend and how laborious we are in tending to the details and the opportunities and working on the challenges, it is still the impression that we make decisions in the best interest of folks other than the people of Sacramento. And while I know that we work very hard, I think that these particular issues, like the abandonment of a bikeway, which last week I was wearing my bike pin, I don't have it on right now, but Hillary Clinton actually asked me if I was in favor of bikeways, because she saw my pin. And I said, "Well, I'm trying to get people to bike more, so yes." And it's one of those moments where I think our culture is changing so dramatically, away from cars, because we recognize the negative impacts that only driving create. And, you know, I think the staff tried to reflect those changing values in the idea of Vision Zero, which is something I've championed, in the idea, though, that the time that this project was approved was a different era. And it's a different era, too, in that, you know, six-packs are not something we tend to like anymore. And I've actually worked with another applicant. I have a little tiny bit of new growth in my part of Natomas, so I have a slight appreciation for the challenges and opportunities that Councilmember Ashby confronts on a daily basis. But that particular developer decided they wanted to change out the six-packs, because the community really didn't like them, and we've collaborated to make a much better project there, and a project that I think we can all be proud of. So I think the tenacity to fight for an old way while confronted with an opportunity to embrace a new way is very much that crossroads that the city tends to be faced with on a daily basis. The abandonment policy is one that I took issue with earlier this year in a project in my district, where it's just assumed that a discretionary action by the council would be guaranteed to abandon right-of-way on Fourth Avenue in Land Park, to build homes on top of that right-of-way. I felt very strongly the same as Councilmember Ashby, that that's a discretionary action of the council. And I felt that that project in particular was not a good project, as it was conceived, and that the abandonment of the right-of-way was not in the public's interest. So one of the things I think we need to really clear up is an abandonment policy that does vest some of the values the council's been debating into that. So it's not necessarily, especially on a going-forward basis, just assume that we'll adopt an abandonment. I know that, for a variety of reasons, we like to abandon things, because they have costs, they have liabilities, and there are a lot of old right-of-ways that no longer seem to serve a purpose. I do think we become shortsighted when we abandon them without really looking at the big picture. So, Mr. City Manager, I think that's something worth looking into, as we go forward on a variety of planning projects, and I'm not sure if it's really in the development code or if it's in public works somewhere, but I'd like to look at that. We have just updated our BikeMaster plan, and the council, you know, continues to try to work towards those things, and I know we've got Jim here from Saba, and we're working to improve our policies around biking, just like we're trying to reduce traffic deaths. But that this was in the BikeMaster plan is still something that I think is challenging, because I would have liked to see that cleared up. And when I talk about integrity, too, I think Councilmember Chenier wants us to keep an understanding that we had previously, even though it wasn't carried through, through the development process and ultimately consecrated through action by the council. And I think in the end, I don't have the institutional memory to go back and know what happened, when and where, and although we are a continuous body, I think that's a nice way to think about sitting here for so long, on a long evening. I think that the values of the city are changing, and so I think this is really ultimately a very hard decision. I have asked the council for deference in my district to serve my people, and I think on projects like this, I tend to give deference to my colleagues. So unless there is some compromise here, I would tend to defer, as is my judgment, as I have before, on matters great and small, including Curtis Park Village, to my colleague Jay Chenier deferred, out of respect for his decision-making. And I think in this particular case, I would defer to the judgment of my colleague, especially because it's clear this is a discretionary item. That being said, I have the utmost sympathy for the development team that wants to sell this project, has installed utilities, and ultimately feels that maybe the city is wronged them. I think that we need to clean up this process, so it's maybe the abandonment's taken care of on the front end, before a map is recorded, and that issues like this no longer arise at the point at which they've arisen here. And I think we owe it to our development community to clarify and rectify that policy. But in lieu of a better answer, I just think that's where I stand.
Okay. I'm going to ask a couple of questions here, then I'll continue with the council members. So I'm very sensitive, as a mayor of this city, to any perception that the city is not keeping its word, especially to people who want to do business within the city. I think that's very, very important. So I take this issue very, very seriously, even though it's 500 feet and one project, et cetera. This is important, and that's why we're spending so much time on it. But we have to balance a very odd set of facts, and one of the things that is unique about this is not as if there were a change in circumstances over the course of, say, a six-month or one-year period. We've had a 10-year gap here, or longer than a 10-year gap. I mean, because of the recession and the moratorium, there was one set of circumstances prior to the recession and the moratorium, and now it's 2017, and so this is really, if it's not a unique circumstance, it's close to a unique circumstance. But I'm struck by page three of the staff report, where the staff says very clearly, and recognize that the staff is recommending approval of the project and the abandonment. You say very clearly, members of the staff, that if this development project were to be proposed now in 2017, staff recommendations would be to require the development to include the Class I path along the Airport Boulevard easement. Okay, so you're telling us, at least as your recommendation, that is a matter of what's the best public policy, especially as Councilmember Hanson talks about, you know, sort of the changing culture and the move towards more bikability and fewer cars, et cetera, that that would be your recommendation? So then you go back into history and you ask the question. And I know there's a legal issue, and I'm not talking about the legal issue necessarily, just the comment, my own common sense notion of what is detrimental reliance. Did the developer rely on a promise and spend a lot of money as a result of that promise? And this is where I'm stuck, in terms of your argument, and I think you made a good argument, but I'm frankly stuck. You look back at the record, in 2006, the final map was recorded. And whether it was a mistake or not a mistake, the truth of the matter is, when it was recorded, the remaining Airport Road easement was not removed through the map process, and it remained a public road. Okay, maybe that was a mistake, but that's a fact. Then you go a year later, and this is, Jeff Harris asked the key question for me. When did you actually build the, when did you, I don't know what the word is, when did you put in the infrastructure? When did you pave? When did you do the work to lead to this day when you want to build the project? And apparently it was in early 2007. The staff report says in January of 2007, you submitted the abandonment application to the city. And it wasn't like there were crickets here, that it was silent. In fact, area residents and bicycle advocates raised concerns with the proposed abandonment. And then it was continued to June the 12th of 2007. You held a hearing to consider the abandonment. In light of the same concerns raised from bicycle advocates in the community, the abandonment request was continued to June 21st, then July 17th. And then, I guess, the recession and all the business hit and never went forward. So Mr. Abbott, who is a great advocate, says, seems to say that there's no evidence that the abandonment was ever in doubt. Well, at the time you built the infrastructure relying upon this, the abandonment was in fact in doubt. And then you got 10 years and the abandonment issue was never cleared up. So I get that the tentative, I, I get, I get that in all probability, from the staff perspective and the developer perspective, that the intent was probably, because of the way the, the map was approved, to eventually offer the abandonment. But the staff is telling us, and I think I would agree, that all things being equal, the abandonment's not in the best interest of the city. And yet, you applied for it. The staff may have dropped the ball, but there was never, the follow-through. I don't understand why you built the infrastructure and why you expended the money back in 2007 before the abandonment issue was, was clarified by the prior city council. That's the Jeff Harris question that I'm having the hardest time with. Because, yes, please, because it's either reason, it's either detrimental reliance or it's not.
So let, let me try and put some clarification on this. We didn't start the improvements in 2007. We started a massive brownfield site cleanup first. But I, I encourage you to look at the staff report that we did rely upon, that's from this city, that talks about, and I, and I quote, "The city's long-term plans include the eventual abandonment of the entire airport road right-of-way."
But you had neighbors who were, who were, who were adamantly against it, and this was an issue in controversy.
We didn't. Actually, we, we had as many neighbors at the community meetings concerned about public safety of having a bike path go through their backyard.
And, but it was an issue in controversy back in 2007, and it wasn't.
And then the city acted on it. Otherwise, you could have just as easily conditioned us to build the bike, bike path. But you did. You conditioned us to build a Class 3 bike path, which is built, which is in place today. So we were conditioned to do something, and we could have been conditioned to do something different, we would have done it before we built public improvements.
I get it, so this is a close one. I get it. Okay. Thank you. Next, Councilman Guerra.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Brian, could you put up that, that bike design that you brought up earlier? The other one, the one that had the, the lanes? That one right there, yeah. I think it's, I think it's that one. My eyesight's not that good this far. But I, you know, I guess, well, first of all, I want to leave that up there for a bit because, one, I, I agree with the mayor. I think that if, you know, having chaired the county planning commission and endured county planning commissions, what has to happen to get to the final map approval? I mean, and everything you have to do to that point is extremely extensive. And not only that, but for both neighbors, and I'm assuming in this case, both neighbors who didn't want, you know, a, a bike lane or hiking trail or anything behind their house versus the ones who did want one. So, I mean, I think that, that's the big frustration here because we, we got to a point where there left a quagmire. So that's on one issue here. And that, I think that, that this will have a, a, a longer effect with our city about what we do here. But that, the, the point here about everything we've been talking about, bike safety, that really does concern me even more so. I've been trying to cycle and do this, you know, progressive thing of riding my bike to work, you know, and coming down. I avoided now Stockton Boulevard. Hopefully, this, this planning grant will help us get to some point where someday somebody will want to run, ride down Stockton Boulevard. But every day I come into downtown, I, I have concerns with the way that cyclists interact with drivers. So I think the issue of having protected bike lanes, even in residential areas, is, is a difficult one. So, so my question, I guess, for the, you know, the, the council member is, you know, you bring up this, this design here. I know that in, in my council district, where we had issues with cyclists and a new development came in, we did require bike lanes on one side. We also restricted parking so that no bike, no vehicles could park in those bike lanes and then left parking on one side. It does force the decision of who wants to buy there, whether they want to live in a place where they have that limited parking. But they may also be buying in that place because they're a single-vehicle place or not. So I guess my question is, you know, because it seems like there's no real easy solution here, but if we had a situation like your design that you posted up here where we had the bike lane, a protected loading zone, and I happened to ride the, the test lane that we did on P Street, thank you, Councilmember Hanson, for putting that test lane up there. And, and I gotta say, it was, it was a, it was a unique experience. Not only did I feel protected, but as I watched a big van park, it actually seemed easier. And if, you know, if I was parking, I also would not hit my rims on the sidewalk, too. So, for those who care about their rims. But, but my point is, I think, could, could we not do something in that middle, like a Class 2 protected bike lane in that area? And I, maybe I, and I haven't looked at the design specs enough of that roadway. Is that, is, is that a possibility that we could do?
Brian Moore, Public Works. So, good question. We looked at that a fair amount. I, I think the answer is probably no. That probably doesn't make a lot of sense. This is a residential street, so it's 30 feet from gutter to gutter, which is our standard for that. So certainly, a Class 1 would be safer, but I wouldn't call a Class 3 bike route unsafe. If it were, we wouldn't have that as a city standard. So when you start to talk about whether it's a parking on one side or parking, bike lanes on both sides, any way to slice that inside 30 feet, it's really never intended to have bike facilities. That's why it's that narrow. What you end up doing is pushing the vehicular lanes up against one gutter pan or the other. You're gonna create problems with garbage pickup, parking, just cars driving that close to the curb is, is not a great idea. So we looked at that, and I don't think we would recommend trying to cram a, a bike lane, Class 2 or otherwise, on, on that street.
Okay. Well, this is a tough one because, I mean, I, I mean, even, I know a Class 3 is not gonna be considered unsafe, but even when I go down, say, 58th Street, it's, when you have, when you have parking and then vehicles coming on, it, it is, it is dangerous for, I mean, it can get dangerous for cyclists. And if not, then they're, they feel like they have to go on a sidewalk, and then now you have pedestrian conflicts at that point. Yeah, this is a tough one because I'll, I'll tell you, we are arguing about 5, 500 feet and, over, over an intended longer system. And I know in, in my own council district, we were arguing about 721 square feet for a real estate office. And the challenge is on that, so, as we know. So I, everyone has their district issue, and I do have a, a district, you know, preference. But I, I am concerned about what this says about our agreement when we finalize, you know, a map for a development project. That, 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 that has a, a very long effect. Anyways, that's a long way of saying it's, we're in a, we're in a quagmire, and I'm, I'm a little concerned about how we, how we move forward here.
Okay. Thank you very much. Councilman Carr.
Thank you, Mayor. Could we have the applicant come back up? Obviously, you see us struggling. Do you have a solution?
Short of asking you to approve the abandonment, we, we've gone around and around on this. And look, you know what? I've been in this business 30 years. I've built thousands of homes. I've designed hundreds of subdivisions. And in all my years, I've never come across one of these. Now, that being said, I've also never seen an issue like this raise its head in this way. So this is, I, I get the struggle. It, it, it's not an easy one.
Obviously, you can't do anything with the homes that you had projected along the easement. Is there a way to widen the streets in the other areas?
Well, it's a small.
Accommodate a Class 2.
It, it's a small subdivision, and so we've built it to the standards that we were conditioned to build it to. Had we not made the improvements as we were conditioned to do, had the city not accepted, we don't even own the roads anymore. The city owns them. So had we not gone through all of that process, yeah, we could have done that 2005, 2004, when we were going through the process that we went through. Today, it's, unfortunately, it's like the ship's left the dock. So, other than to tell you that, you know, we'll lose value and, to City Attorney's point, then we have to take a different route to figure out how to resolve this. I, I don't want to do that. That's not our company's purpose in life.
Understood. Okay. Councilman Warren, anything else?
I'm gonna be real brief. One, this really illustrates how difficult, you know, building housing is in, in, in urban areas and, you know, and particularly in cities. And, and I think all of you know, we have a housing, we have a housing crisis right now and, and, and a, an affordable housing shortage, as well as major issues regarding the homeless. And, you know, this does not seem to be a situation that's, that, that ends in a way that's gonna make us feel, I think, like justice was served, you know? And like I said, I've been on the other side. I understand the issues, and I think all of the questions that have been posed, I mean, the developer does have responsibility, and there are things that the developer needs to really own and, and, and do. But a lot of what the developer does really is in response to how the city, staff, and others, you know, respond back to the, to the proposal, as well as, you know, the developer trying to answer to a lot of community concerns as it relates to development. And so it's not an easy, it's not an easy process. And, and I'm not pointing fingers at, at anybody, but this is just a, a very clear illustration of how very difficult these kinds of things are. It would be my hope that we could find some way so that this, again, is not a win-lose scenario. I've heard Councilwoman Ashby say that they've pretty much exhausted everything. I just heard the applicant, I think, say the same thing, that you've pretty much exhausted everything. And I think, you know, what you're hearing from us is, we're really trying to figure out how, you know, to, to put this thing together, but I'm, I'm not certain we're gonna be able to get there. And so with that, I'm gonna defer back to my colleagues and, and kind of see where this falls. But, you know, my, my sense, and ultimately, I know that our responsibility as a developer is to really try to cross our Ts, dot our Is as best we can. And oftentimes, we like to try to rely on, you know, city and, and other county and other government officials as they give us information, and then we respond to that. Because every move takes time and money, and time and money in this business is, is a big issue. And so, you know, I'm hopeful that we can still find some type of compromise or some solution that might make this more palatable, but it's a very difficult situation, so, thanks.
Councilmember Harris.
Well, as everybody said, this is definitely a tough one. I am very sensitive to the idea of sending a signal to developers that we can change our minds as a city and cause troubles down the road. But there's, there's still a couple of facts here that I find a little troubling. You know, the fact that the final map showed the easement and had no note about the vacation of the easement and that, that vacation was applied for and not perfected are, are very significant to me. And, you know, I've worked in construction my whole life. These, these are, are issues that I think I would pay attention to before I invested huge sums of money. And I appreciate that cleaning the site was costly and that, that work was performed, you know, moving forward with the development agreement. But I would admonish staff, and I agree with Councilmember Hanson, we've got to get our policies aligned. I mean, these entitlements have to be all-inclusive. These loose ends should not come up 10 years later. It, it seems to me it was incumbent upon staff and the developer equally to dot these Is and cross these Ts. And the ball got dropped, I feel, on both sides. It's, it's unfortunate, but, you know, the bottom line is, I think that I'll go ahead and, and second Councilmember Ashby's motion. This is very difficult, but we've got some cleanup to do. This, this is a tough decision.
Yep. Okay. Last comment, Councilmember Ashby. I'll let Mr. Abbott make a, make a close here. You, you want him to, you want the last word? Okay, now, Mr. Abbott wanted to make another comment, so I was gonna give him the opportunity to do that, okay?
Thank you. Admittedly, a difficult decision. And, you know, we're, we're the first ones to, to recognize that. You know, we discussed the question of detrimental reliance, but in actuality, we don't have to prove detrimental reliance. The reason is, we have a development agreement. And why that's important, if you listen to the comments tonight, many of the council members discuss Vision Zero. There's a new way of thinking. I have heard probably at least four council members talk about that, and the new BikeWay Master Plan. Please bear in mind that the city council approved the development agreement for this project back in 2005, 2006. Under that development agreement, it says that new general plan policies, new visions don't apply to this project. So I would ask you to respect the terms of the development agreement in your deliberations. And I would, at least from a lawyer, from the optics of a lawyer, I don't think you can apply new policy to the project in terms of whether or not to grant this abandonment.
Point of clarification, maybe, Mr. City Attorney, I'm sorry to interrupt, but Mr. City Attorney, the abandonment as a discretionary act is not new, it's not a new policy, and it would have been in effect at the time of the project. That's correct?
That's correct.
And the record does show that the abandonment was never perfected or cured because of opposition from the community. So I, I, I'm unclear, Bill, about what that means as far as the new policies. I get that we have this pressure, but we also get that it wasn't fixed, and it wasn't done, and the council never approved it. So those things aren't in conflict. It just means that now in our discretionary act, we, we can take into consideration those values.
So if, if I can respond, so I think there's.
Be up briefly, please, because we.
Okay. So first of all, I, you know, I'll make the proposition that newly adopted policies don't apply to this project. But to answer to your point, bear in mind that as, as we look at the record, through the tentative map, through the final map, through the development standards approved by this city council that said, "Build in the, in the right-of-way," there was no pushback. There was no blowback from the city at all. Under those circumstances, when you have a development agreement that gives the developer the contractual right to build the project consistent with those expectations, the issue of pushback didn't come until after they had the development agreement. They had all their entitlements. What are they supposed to do? Walk away from the project? That's an unreal, with all due respect, that's an unrealistic expectation.
But the question is, was the, was the abandonment a condition precedent to the, to making the development agreement enforceable? I mean, because it either is a part of the, either is a part of the whole discussion or it isn't. It's either, the, the abandonment issue is either an irrelevant fact or it's a, or it's some form of a condition precedent to the development agreement being interpreted in one, one way or the other. I mean.
There's, it's, it's part, it's part of the package. And I would concur with the City Attorney's Office that at 30,000 feet, it's a discretionary act. But you have to look at the discretionary act provision, the good faith clause, in light of the fact through the entire entitlement history, nobody at City Hall said, "This is a bad idea." You're, essentially, we are redesigning the project tonight.
Understood.
That's not consistent. So thank you.
It's a tough one. And it's a real tough one. You've done a good job. I mean, it's been a good and important discussion. Councilmember Ashby, final word.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Harris, for the second. As.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Harris, for the second. As we move into making this decision, I just want to make one last couple, set of statements to my colleagues that I hope you will consider. First, I hope you will give me deference. I hope that you will recognize that I've represented my district for eight years, and that I know them well, and that I care deeply about the development projects, and that I have worked professionally with this organization as well. In fact, they brought some, a major change that came to the council on this project less than a year ago that I supported, and that I stood up for and helped them with. But to pretend that council members before me that sat in this seat didn't express an opinion is to ignore everything that the mayor and Jeff Harris just said. This is not the first time that they have asked for this to be considered, and Councilmember Tretheway and Mayor Fargo sent them back. Exactly as is your instinct to do right now, is what the previous councils did, and told them to come up with another solution. And Councilmember Carr's very direct question to them today is exactly where they landed with Mayor Fargo and Councilmember Tretheway, and the answer was no. They just want to build, they just want to use the painted stripe that is on the road now and call that a bike lane. It is not safe. It is at the discretion of this council to make the decision now. This developer submitted the final map. This developer did not include the abandonment that he now seeks on that final map. He is the one that submitted the map that left the bike path on. If he had taken it off, and this council had made a different decision back then, we wouldn't be here making this decision. But we're here making the decision because now is when it is timely. Now is when a council has to make a decision. Councilmember Tretheway, Councilmember Fargo, Mayor Fargo, did the exact same thing, told this group, "Go find another way." And the landowners to the north and to the south sought the same thing. They sought to abandon the path. Both were turned away. Those paths are being built. No abandonment has been approved on this project. So it's not true that nobody that sat at this dais felt that that path was a bad, moving that path was a bad idea. Heather Fargo said she didn't want to move the path. She wanted to dedicate a path. Councilmember Tretheway said, "I don't want to move the path. Leave the path. And I know you guys think it was a recession. It was a little thing called a moratorium." This all drops dead in 2007, '08, because in December of 2008, Natoma went into a building moratorium, and they could not build. The issue didn't come back until we got out of that building moratorium in 2015. That is why it's in front of us now, not because of recession, because of a building moratorium. I'm asking you to please support my motion.
Thank you. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Let's call the role on this, okay, please?
Councilmember Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Yes.
Council, Vice Mayor Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Guerra?
Yes.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Good, intelligent civil discussion. Members, it's been four hours. I've talked to the patient auditor, and was a chance to talk to our finance director. I know, sensitive about people being here late and then continuing the item. I apologize for that. But I think, without objection, I'd like to continue items 35 and 36. Long items, we'll continue them to the 31st of October is what we will do. Do we need a motion for that, Ms. Capi, or can...
That would be nice, yes.
Okay, moved in, 35 and 36 together. It's been moved by Councilmember Hanson, seconded by Harris. To continue the items, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstain. Thank you. We do have one more item. It's item 34, which is the Jacinto Creek Planning and Refineries Plan Update. Is there any live controversy on this one or public testimony? So whose district is this? Councilmember Carr, this is yours.
I move we close the public hearing and move the item.
You have to open it first. Let's open the public hearing before we can close it. The public hearing is open.
I move we close the public hearing.
Now he moves that it's closed and seconded. Very good. And there's no public testimony. Any brief comment on this, Councilman Carr? Okay, moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstain. Passes nine to nothing. That is our agenda for this evening. Are there council ideas and questions?
You have some appointments.
We do, I do have some appointments that I do have to read. I look forward to reading. Okay, can I do that?
Yes, you may.
Okay, thank you. So, Councilmember Harris, as you noted earlier, and as part of our consent calendar, we officially established our new council water standing committee. Councilmember Harris is the chair. I'd like to appoint Councilmember Ashby, Councilmember Guerra, Councilmember Hanson. Good. So you're all appointed, and it's your job to prevent the drought. Okay. Next, we have the, now we have the Governance Ad Hoc Committee. Councilmember Carr's been working very, very hard on the issues of governance and policy. Tonight, I'd like to establish an ad hoc committee with him as the chair. Remember, under our council rules, ad hoc committees are public committees. We meet in public. You're the chair. I want to appoint Vice Mayor Jennings, Councilmember Harris, and my office with Chief Stut Mike McKeever as my designee. Finally, the Library JPA. Vice Mayor Jennings will be stepping off the Library JPA to serve in his place. I'd like to formally appoint Councilmember Carr to be the city's new representative on the Library JPA. So be it. All right. Council ideas and questions. Councilman Chenier.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to see if I can do the AB 1234 report, and if I can do it, I'll include Member Harris, Member Hanson, the mayor, and Member Carr. And, were you on the, you went to Austin? Okay, so the five of us. So I think we had a really informative trip, learned that Austin is doing a lot of great things. We also learned that they have a lot of challenges, I think primarily infrastructure, as I stated before, transportation and housing. We also learned that our public art kind of blows our public art away. We took a tour of it, and I thought we're doing really well, something that we need to really promote in the city. So, again, overall, good trip, learned a lot, and kudos to the chamber for putting on a good thing. I do want to ask the city manager one thing, and I talked to Jody about this. One of the challenges we have with our public art is we don't have money for maintenance. So we have the 2% of public art with public buildings, but no maintenance dollars. So I'd like to ask if we could bring in a change in the public art ordinance, and I don't know what the number is. I think staff can figure this out, but that some percentage of that 2% can be used for ongoing maintenance of those public art pieces. I think that solves two problems for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Councilman Harris.
Just two quick announcements. We're going to have a public safety community meeting tomorrow, October 18th, 6:00 PM, at South Natoma's Community Center, 2991 Truxell Road. This meeting co-assigns with the regular scheduled NCA meeting. We'll be having SAC PD, SAC Fire Code Enforcement, and County Park Rangers to give a full-spectrum report on safety issues in South Natoma. And lastly, our PNA general meeting is Saturday, October 21st, starts at 10:00 AM at Fremont Presbyan Church, 5770 Carlson Drive, Room E210, and I will be there to discuss city issues.
Thank you very much. Councilman Guerra.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of quick announcements. First of all, I wanted to give a shout out and a thank you to all those SAC State students who went out this last weekend to Napa and helped out with some of the efforts out there and volunteered their time. And there's a lot of travesty happening around locally and around the world, and there's a group of Sacramentans putting on a SAC for Puerto Rico event at Mango's in District Four this weekend at 5:00 on Saturday at 5:00 PM at Mango's Sacramento for Puerto Rico. And just, you know, happy to see so many Sacramentans putting their time and effort for local disasters and also helping our fellow Americans in Puerto Rico.
Good, very good. Thank you so much. Finally, Councilmember Carr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. While we were in Austin, I took the opportunity to visit with Ann Morgan, the city attorney of Austin, and Janet Goodall, the city clerk of Austin. I want to thank our city clerk for arranging those visits for me. Ms. Morgan was very generous with her time. The Austin City Council is made up of 11 members, and they each have three or four employees pretty similar to us. And, Mr. Mayor, their mayor takes no salary.
Well, let me take that under consideration. Thank you.
They do a couple of things a little differently than we do. They have work sessions, and in their work sessions, there are no public comments, and the purpose of the work session is for council members to talk to each other, to express ideas, to show concerns, and to decide what they're going to work on. So I thought that was an interesting thing that they do, and I don't know if we're allowed to do that under the Brown Act. They also have a message board where council members can write messages to each other that are open to the public. And, Mr. City Attorney, Mr. City Manager, rather, the budget for the city of Austin is $3.8 billion. The delegation to the city manager is $59,000. So the reason their meetings are so long is anything over $60,000 has to come to the council, and it's embedded in the city charter, almost impossible to change. I got a lot more out of talking with Ms. Morgan. I'd be happy to talk to anyone who wants to know what other things she shared with me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilman Carr, if there's anything else to come before...
Yeah, one more. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, Rick. It wasn't, it weren't posted up, yes.
Can't punch up for...
Go ahead, sir.
C-Hold and your neighborhood is coming tomorrow, Thursday, at the Robbie Waters Library from 6:00 to 7:00. That way, you can come to the library, and we can take care of whatever needs you have in the community. And then on Friday, the 20th, the final trucks and such is going to take place at Garcha Bend Park to help us out and bring it into this wonderful season. We have Helping Paws, which will be making their debut. Helping Paws is a youth-led group that aids the front street, animal shelter, and adopting pets in need. We're going to have music, fun, lots of foods, and we want to make this an event to remember. And then finally, the mayor and I had the opportunity to open up Lewis Park. And as you remember, my challenge to the mayor that I was a better tennis player than he was, and I would have to say, without saying, without saying that I lost, I would have to say that our mayor is an incredible tennis player. That's my story, and I'm sticking to it. So not only did we play tennis, but we played this wonderful game called pickle. And it is pickleball. It's an incredible game, and we'll leave the results on the tennis court.
I'm saying nothing, except it was a lot of fun. Thank you very much. Word adjourned.